...notice of this meeting of the board of justice is sent by email to the Espe Park Press and posted our official newspapers and posted on the balsa board in this building. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Lusko?
Here.
Mr. Orlando?
Here.
Mr. Capoli?
Here.
Ms. Eads?
Here.
Mr. Palazzano?
Here.
Mr. Zanovich?
Here.
Mr. Fries?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald, he's absent. I just want to remind the board, when you're speaking, to turn the mic on and make sure it's close to you, so that your voice is amplified, and then when you're not speaking, turn it off, so when you're flipping your papers, it's not getting any feedback with the recording.
Will do. Good evening, welcome to the October 14, 2021, meeting. Would you please join the board and the fledge of allegiance? Fledge of allegiance, to the United States of America and to the brother precious hands, a nation under God, in this long, delivering justice for our world. All right, I don't think we have any investments tonight. Do you have anything before we?
No, I just have to you call the order. I have a couple of procedural things to do.
Okay, first up is, and our only application but late, is that all been investments at 112, 114, 12th Avenue?
So, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. Number one, this is a special meeting, and the meeting, notice of special meeting was April printed in two newspapers and posted at Town Hall, etc., in accordance with the Public Meeting Act, so it is lawfully to be a special meeting. Number two, just a couple of things, we swear in Jerry Frieda, who's the Borough Engineer, Christine Bell, Borough Planner, and Ted Bianchi are construction official and zoning officer. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could all raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, will be the truth, best you know, as to help you guide?
Do it.
Okay, so we have three ideas, Mr. Chairman, so everyone's sworn in. Couple of things we need to mark into the record. First up, we're going to start off as V3, and this is a certification from Board Member Amberi Drutunovic, that she listened to the tapes or reviewed the transcript of the August 26, 2021 meeting, so thank you for that, that's very important, particularly on applications which extend, so thank you very much for that. And then, speaking of that, April, who, just so that the attorneys and everyone in the room knows, do we have all eligible voters tonight?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome, awesome.
And then, we have a couple of other things.
I also sign one of those.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, so we're going to mark that as V4, and that is a certification that Board Member Ross listened to the tapes or reviewed the transcript, which hearing was that?
The same.
No, it's 23rd.
August 26, 2021. Okay.
And also, Mr. Hutchinson replaced.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, perfect, so we now have that, thank you. So then, the thank you that I gave to Board Member Drutunovic also goes to Mr. Ross for listening to that, not always easy, it's not always fun, and I do realize that those things when you listen, that makes you realize how important it is for one person to speak at a time and all those things. The other thing is, I'm going to start with A33, and can it be that we have 33 things already to evidence, but A33 is a correspondence from Mr. Shipers to the Borough and zoning Board and my office and the Borough Engineer's Office, and also is copied to Mr. Rick Brodsky, and it's all about electric vehicles and new legislation, so we're going to mark that as A33, and Mr. Shipers, I'm sure, will address that momentarily, or at some point. And we're also going to mark as A34 is a correspondence, we received from Bill Shiper, it's the September 27, 2021, with the underlying appraisal report/feasibility study prepared by Theodore Lamasella, and that's dated August 24, 2021, so that the report is, the A34 is the report dated August 24, 2021, plus the associated cover letter from Mr. Shipers, and that cover letter was dated September 27, 2021, and we do see here that it was copied to Rick Brodsky, the objectors attorney, and Rick, I'm assuming you received that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And last but not least, Mr. Chairman, we indicated this is a special meeting, and so we had the applicant reset notice, having an abundance of caution, so that this would be a legal convened meeting, and so Mr. Shipers did send the notice, the Board Secretary and I reviewed that notice and found everything to be in order, so we thank the applicant for doing that. All right, and my trusted sidekick says there's one other piece of evidence that we should mark into the record, I'm going to mark as V5, and that is a report from the Borough Belmont Bureau of Fire Protection and Prevention dated August, I'm sorry, dated October 1, 2021. And Mr. Shipers, did you receive this?
I did.
Okay, Mr. Brodsky, did you receive this?
I don't think I did.
Okay, do we have an extra copy of the document, or I can give it to them? All right, you got to give it back, really, I promise. And, okay, so, Mr. Shipers, good evening and welcome, and how did you wish to proceed tonight?
Well, I guess you gave a little prelude to my correspondence regarding the new state legislation that has passed regarding electric vehicles, and in particular, how it applies to redevelopment or development with more than five units, so maybe I could say a short piece on that, I think that may assist a little bit of where Mr. DeGale could go a bit, and then I have Mr. Lamasella, put him on, if he's going to admit, we left off that cross-examination, Mr. Lamasella, the appraiser. If both of you like it, or you want to have it again.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, you ready for him?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you again for your special session, it's truly appreciated in this arduous process of this application, but we thank you for your time, energy, and effort, and taking time with your family and loved ones. Very briefly, it came to my attention probably right after our last meeting when we were here, the state legislature signed by the governor, by Governor Murphy, was new legislation that is applicable statewide regarding electric vehicles. This electric vehicle tied up in America is moving quickly, New Jersey adopted the, really as standardized ordinance to be adopted by whatever it is, 562 municipalities in New Jersey, that ordinance indicates that for any new development in excess of five residential units, it must now comply with this legislation. Effectively, the legislation says as follows, it says that every builder redevelopment must make 15% of their parking electric vehicle make ready, and make ready is conduit wiring to a point of attachment of an electrical charging device, and statute requires that 5% of it come online with CO, an official 5% of the 15%, year two, and by year three, 15% be online and working. To encourage developers, I think, who get into the EUV game, so to speak, and I think our ad hoc, Richard DeGale and Mary Ann Aron, the fact that we were in this a year ago, I took the head of the curve, we, the legislation says that for every make-ready spot you make, and Mr. DeGale testified for our intention, as we did previously, that we're going to be 47, all of our stalls make ready, the legislation gives an incentive credit of 10% of your parking that you electrify or make ready, are additional counts for any parking requirement you must satisfy. So our obligation, we believe, is 48 spots, we're providing 47 make-ready spots, 10% is 4.7 spots in addition that we receive by the legislation, and the legislation was also kind, it said if there is a decimal point, it rounds up, so our 4.7 spots rounds up to five spots, we now understate statute, whether, our opinion is whether implemented and adopted by Belmont or not, as of yet, it is the law of New Jersey, that we're credited 52 available parking spots, where we need 48. So any waiver or variance, we think is now null and void by the state statute, or the nation proposal that we're reviewing. If anyone has any questions about the legislation, my letter, or the proposed ordinance, I'm more than happy to try to assist now or later.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Mr. Lamasella, back to the same question.
Sure. Are you still going to go forward looking for the 48 spot, just as a matter of course? It's not a major situation, 47 to 48, but I'm just curious if you're pulling that variance?
Look, we've come this far, I'll leave it on the table, but I think for the board's edification, I think if that's an issue that the board discusses and raises, and I think for being careful, we'll leave it as a waiver or a variance, I think it's more of a waiver than a variance, but what I want to be clear with the board is, so the board understands what the new state requirements and calculations are, but I would think that we would still request for redundancy, let's say, that issue. Thank you, and I appreciate the thought.
Anyone else for the board?
You're still going to provide 47 places though?
Oh, absolutely, electric, make ready.
But there's still ways out. Just because you have that five credit, you're not pulling some of the places out?
No, absolutely not. Okay. We're thankful you got it.
Mr. Zanovich, did you have a question?
So those are 47 spots that are in the garage, and you had talked about the two spots on the street, as well, when you offered that, does that, so would that make your number 49? I know that doesn't make difference with a decimal, right?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we get to count the two on the street as part of our onsite, but what our application, as the engineer might be, I don't know.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, all right, at least we're starting out in agreement. That was our offer in our application, we wanted to be progressive, and we wanted to send a signal, not only to the Belmont, but to the Pratt Brothers communities, that, you know, this is the future, so the offer still stands, I know there was debate, a little debate when we discussed it for the board, whether it's something that the town really wants to implement, or they want to do it there, and how is it regulated, all of that, but parking, while we're on the topic, parking is post the under state pronouncements, EV spaces are to be marked green, you know, normally white stripes for stuff, and they have, as they're blue, and now future EVs, green marked spots, so, you know, we still offer that, if the board was so inclined, and if the Borough, perhaps if we were successful, if we had a condition in the resolution, that we would do it if the Borough was willing to accept it. That's our position.
Okay, do you have information about, like, what the charging station will look like?
I have lots of information, if you know what I'm looking at.
So is a different witness going to present that?
Mr. DeGale is probably more than capable of doing that, but I would just, as a pro for information for you, there are several different, essentially heads, or electrical heads, if you're driving a Tesla, it's a different head than a Ford, Tesla kind of cornered their market on their vehicles, and not quite that, 4GM, I'm going to escape in the arena, there's about three different standardized plugs that go into the air, so you need to have the heads, or I assume there may even be coming out of interface to crossover, they're about a foot by foot, they're about six inches thick, they have a wire and a plug, Mr. DeGale will, they can be surface mounted, they can hang, they can be double sided, the technology seems to be growing rapidly in that area.
Okay, I'll leave all those questions to you.
Okay. Just one clarification, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Shipers is dead on, on the, on the new legislation, no question about that, but I just wanted to verify, you said you're still going for the variance out of an abundance of caution, I guess, and I assume you're still going for the design waivers for the undersized nature and size of all of the parks?
Correct.
Thank you, any other questions on this matter? All right, Mr. Shipers, back to you.
All right, I think we're back to Mr. Lamasella.
All right, Mr. Lamasella, good evening, welcome back, just state your name again for the record.
Theodore James Lamasella.
And you were previously sworn in last meeting, correct?
Yes.
And you recognize that you're still under oath?
I do.
Okay.
Is our microphone, or do I have to do that?
I think I have to press the button.
All right, there we go. Thank you. Red means on. What was that?
Red means on.
Oh, green means on.
At the mic, at the mic.
Oh, up here, I see, okay. All I know is that parking spot.
Hi, I think it's Mr. Ross. Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rick Brodsky, pardon the law from Van Sylbrem and Aaron, on behalf of the neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Mathews, I have no color, so I can't.
So you're for your board, sir.
Okay, there's a question. Is that working?
No.
April's still working on it.
It's okay.
We have amazing AV stuff.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, thanks. All right, Mr. Lamasella, just a few, just a few questions, I know we, there wasn't cross-examination last time we met, way back when, thank you for, and thank you, Mr. Shipers, for submitting the full appraisal report, which I had an opportunity to review, and then I just had a couple of follow-up questions from last time, based on that review. Okay, fair?
Yep.
All right, so, just jumping ahead, right to the, to the conclusion, page, page 90, I think it is, of the report, it said, your conclusion was that with redevelopment of the, of high-end, low-density residential use, the neighboring residential properties should experience enhanced value, as opposed to diminished value, correct? Page 90, I think it's page 90. Okay, so then, I'm assuming that inherited in that conclusion is that your view of the proposal that's before the board now is low-density residential use?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, and you consider it to be low-density, notwithstanding the fact that the, it exceeds by, I don't know, over 800% the permitted density in the zone, correct?
I object to the form of question, Mr. Lamasella, I don't know that there's a foundation for some 800%.
Okay, yeah, you're right, mine may have to be wrong, so, so my question is then, I'll withdraw that question, my question is that, in coming to your opinion that the proposed project is low-density, you've come to that opinion, notwithstanding the fact that the permitted density in the zone is 5.8 units per acre, and what's proposed as part of this application is 49.8, is correct?
Yeah, I think, well, I'm saying low-density, there are more, less of the, talking about the density of the number of units, I'm talking more about the low impact of the use as compared to the current use, which is the roomhouse use, which is more of a high-impact.
Got it, you got it. So you're not referring to the applicable zoning in the?
Correct.
Okay, and when you refer to the project as low-density, does that opinion remain, notwithstanding the fact, that the, the proposed FAR is four times that, which is what is permitted in the zone?
I think the same answer.
Same answer?
Correct.
You didn't, you didn't review the zoning?
Well, I reviewed the zoning, but when I say density here, I think I'm talking about also relating the impact, the high-impact.
Sorry, I can't see, and so, what would be your, oh, no, I won't answer that. You also concluded in your report, or you stated in your report, that your opinion, that the highest and best use for this particular property would be for 32 condominium units, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what's the basis of that decision?
Well, the basis is of the, all the uses analyzed, the condominium use produced the highest land value, then the issue was, how many units do we need to make it financially feasible, which is one of the four problems with highest and best use, so it was clear that the condominium use was the highest and best use, the feasibility for our highest and best use, the number of units, and I did a detailed analysis to estimate that 32 units would make it a financially feasible project, considering the, what's there now, what it would need to be to become a condominium development.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand, the highest and best use is based on the financial feasibility, in your opinion, of the project?
Well, the financial feasibility is one of the four problems with highest and best use.
Okay, and so then, is it your opinion that it would not be feasible to develop this property in accordance with the applicable zoning?
It would not be financially feasible to remove the current structures and redevelop it under the current zone, correct?
Okay, and would it also then be a natural corollary, that the highest and best use for this property would, strike that, what is the magic about 32 units?
As I said, it has to be financially feasible.
Okay, all right, that's the answer. Next question, would 40 units be more financially feasible?
Anything above 32 would increase the profit.
And so then, your opinion would be 32 units or more would be the highest and best use for this property?
Correct.
Okay, now, you talked about the valuations for the permitted uses, or, I'm sorry, you called it, I think, summary of scenarios, that's like around page 86 or so, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you valued the condos based on their, on the improved condition of the property?
Correct.
Okay, and you, and then you also did an analysis of the value of the property if it were to be redeveloped with single-family homes, as permitted under the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, and, but when you did the valuation on the single-family homes, it looks as though you valued it, valued the property pre-construction or pre-development, as opposed to as-built, is that right?
The, the townhouse, the condominium valuation was done both ways, first, what the land would be worth as condominium units, then the overall value of the improved units, that was part of the financial feasibility analysis.
Okay, so are, so what is your opinion as to the value of the land if it were to be developed in accordance with the applicable zoning, i.e. three single-family homes or the townhomes?
So, as a free residential lot?
Yes.
The site would be worth 2.1 million?
That would be the site today?
As of August 24, 2021.
Okay, so that would be pre-construction of the three homes?
Correct.
Okay, I couldn't find in there a value of the property of, you know, post-development for the, when, when there would be three homes on the property?
I'm going to object to the form of question, because anyone who has any familiarity with building a house, who built a 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 40,000, 6,000 square foot house, so value is inherent in what is built, what is in the house, what is the price of the components, it's impossible to ask.
Sure, but what, and I agree with you on that, except for the fact that I'm trying to compare apples to apples in the report, and in the report, Mr. Lamasella gives us values of 17 million and plus, and 30 million plus, with regard to the as-built property after the 24 or 32 condos are built, but I didn't see any numbers with regard to the as-built value of the homes.
My response, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Brodsky, with the utmost respect for Mr. Brodsky, if he laid a proper foundation, where he said, you need to assume the following, Mr. Lamasella, that it's going to be a single-family, perhaps with no variances, applying both building coverage, impervious coverage, and if Mr. Lamasella has the ability to apply per-square-foot calculation, maybe he can do that task.
He did it for the condos, he didn't do it for the homes.
That's because home, he knows what the condos are, he knows the size, the height, the square footage, he had it all, he has nothing to calculate the size of the house or a structure, or its value thereof.
Well, that's, that's part of my point, he didn't refer, he didn't cite a single comparable sale of homes in the area, and we know homes in the area are selling for, you know, 1.622, et cetera, et cetera, and so I just wanted to try and get clarification, but I guess I'm not going to, that when he says, you know, when he gives us a value of the built 24 or 32 condominiums, and compares that to the pre-built value of, if, if it was to be developed as single-family homes, I'm just saying that that's not comparing apples to apples, that's my point. If you can correct me on that, Mr. Lamasella, feel free.
One other point before we get there, my engineer, Mr. Tanda, this is an R75, if we're applying the apples of R75, R75 requires 50 by 150, the Belmont Inn is 100 by 140, the, what I call the old human property that we acquired is 50 by 140, so they are three non-conforming, single-family lots, so it also has to come to this board for variance.
I'm just going by what's in Mr. Lamasella's report, and he based the value of the redevelopment into single-family residences as $2.1 million, I'm trying to figure out how he came to that number, and the answer is, he based it on lot value, right? Pre-built value.
Correct.
Okay, but then, when he values 24 condos, he values- But then, when he values 24 condos, he values this as-improved, right? At 17.4 million. And then for his highest and best use of 32 condos, he values as-improved at $23,200. So we have as-improved for the condos, unimproved for the, um, single-family residential development. Yes or no, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the reason is...
It was your yes or no question.
Yeah.
Um, let me see. Oh, yes. And then there was just one other question that I had, in that you, you did say that the, um, going back to your conclusion, that the low-density residential use... Oh, I have two questions. That the low-density residential use should, residential properties, neighboring residential properties should experience enhanced value as opposed to diminished value based on the development of the property, and you said for 32 condominium units. And that is enhanced value as opposed to if the property was developed as, in accordance with zoning, a single-family residential?
No. The ISMS use analysis would prove you would not remove the current structures because they still added more value, roughly 1.3 million, than the value as if taken, available for three residential lots, or 1 million value as if developed for the 13-house, townhouse units in the, uh, layover of the, uh, zoning. So, this thing does not get redeveloped as a single-family residential or townhouse until many years down the road when that landlot becomes much more valuable. At this point, we remain a high-impact rooming house that would negatively impact the market value of the surrounding properties. The development as a 24 or 32-unit residential condominium would enhance the value of the neighboring property.
And just to be clear, and then we'll be done. Am I correct that you are not the opinion that neighboring property owners' values would be enhanced more with the 32 condo units or the 24 condo units? Would not be enhanced more than if the property was developed in accordance with the applicable zoning?
I believe it would be enhanced more.
Would be, so residential values surrounding neighboring residential properties, their values would be enhanced more with a 32-unit condominium development or a 24-unit condominium in development as opposed to three single-family homes?
That's correct.
Thanks. Um, okay. And I'm trying to... Okay, I have no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Brodsky. Last time Mr. Lamisella was here, nobody on the board had asked any questions. And I think we told Mr. Brodsky sweetly that this information wasn't necessarily relevant to the application. Does anybody on the board have questions for Mr. Lamisella at this time? We always reserve our right to ask additional questions, but we kind of breezed through it during the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, may I revisit, I think my ears heard you say you didn't think this testimony was relevant?
I didn't, I don't know that I articulated that correctly. I thought I had heard Mr. Brodsky say that we weren't considering the value of the property or the value of its development as part of our equation on whether or not we'll rent the variance. Am I off on that?
You're off. I'll have to respond, which may encourage you to ask or not ask questions of the witness. But, Mr. Brodsky and the board, economic feasibility of a project, not developer profit, but economic feasibility is certainly within your bounds to consider. And that's why he was retained, that's why he's here, because you need professionals, experten, or evidence to come before you and tell you, you can't rely upon myself or Mr. DeSauwelle or Ms. Ernst, that feasibility, uh, requires condominium development. This is the expert who gives that view. Now, Mr. Brodsky's correct when he will argue developer profit is not necessarily an issue for this board. Whether profit is made or is not made, it's not part of your decision. But what it can be part of your decision is, if a project as proposed is feasible, but then you're asked to limit or change that or modify it, so point of non-feasibility, you need to know that. Because if a project, as Mr. Lamisella testified, is not economically feasible, and if, let's say, per his testimony, status quo remaining, it may be decades or longer in the cycle of real estate and life, as there'll ever be another opportunity. So, completely within your wheelhouse, listen to that testimony and give it the way you choose. Give it no way, give it a lot of it, or anywhere in between.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Schaefer.
And I could ask Mr. Kennedy to weigh in on the issue. I don't want you to take mine.
I would, if I could, Mr. Chair, I would just weigh in real quick, and then Kevin can give us his words first.
I'll tell you what, can we hear from Mr. Kennedy first?
Absolutely. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a complicated question, and I would like to address it at a later time in terms of the, um, overgoing the, uh, analysis and the standard. But I think what Mr. Schaefer says is, some of you might find this to be very valuable, and some might, you might have different values that you signed with. So I would address that, I think it's part of a bigger question that we'll, can address later on if that's appropriate and acceptable.
I'll accept that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would I also be more happy to proffer? This is not the first rodeo that you're hearing this issue with board. Mr. Brodsky and I joined more in 2019, March and April. I submitted two briefs to this board on the identical issue when Mr. Lamisella testified in the White House application. I'm more than happy to re-sign and make part of those rec, that record. All I have to do is change the caption, the same brief on the same issue of economic feasibility, deadness ability, considering what you accepted last time. And I'm more than happy to do that, and I will do that, to make it part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Brodsky?
Yeah, sure. And, um, certainly, Mr. Schaefer can submit whatever, whatever he likes. But I would submit that, uh, with respect to this issue of relevance of the financial testimony, and I think a board member had asked about it, I think, Mr. Gray, last time, the issue of, of finances or, or developability and value of a property comes into play if you have a, uh, a property that is, would be zoned into inutility if the zoning was not adhered to. The most common example would be like for a vacant lot. If you can't build a vacant lot in accordance with applicable zoning, then financial inutility becomes relevant. In this situation, you know, we have the applicant's own appraiser saying the property as it exists today is, is worth, uh, 3.4 million dollars. And he gives various values for various different uses on the property and development on the property, um, none of which are zero, or none of which are, are, you know, the minimus amount of money. Property has value. And so the financial analysis is irrelevant when an applicant is coming to a board to say, "Hey, uh, we don't like the use that's there now, we have better use, and here's why you should do it, and here's why it makes more financial sense to do it our way than opposed, as opposed to what's there now." So, so just for the record, my objection stands with regard to the relevance of the financial analysis, and certainly with regard to the, I'm sorry. Certainly with regard to the level of profit that a developer is looking to make.
I would just say, keep your eyes open, because I believe in the theory, you dance with the girl, you approach an advantage. When Mr. Steck testifies, we're going to see whether his prior testimony, current testimony, agrees or will just proper to you by the same counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add, in conclusion of this, you sound like some really great closing arguments, but we're not there yet. So maybe we can, and certainly, Mr. Schaefer, if you would, just to make the record clear, if there is ever litigation, do you think you could submit your brief within 14 days of the next, if there was a next hearing, within 14 days?
Well, our next hearing is in 14 days, I think, on October 8th.
Okay.
And I will have it within...
28?
28.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 28. I will have it, certainly, for a month.
Okay, and then if you could copy, and Mr. Brodsky could respond if he, if he chooses to. And, Mr. Chairman, I think we can have a more in-depth conversation after this briefs and when we're doing the summation, if that's acceptable to the board.
I think so. And I will try never to say relevant for a long time. All right.
I apologize.
No, no, that's, that was good education. Did anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Lamisella at this time? Certainly, Mr. Gray.
Turn my mic on.
Yeah, I actually remembered at this time. Your testi...
He's got a fantastic hearing.
Yeah. Seriously, I think I'm going to need it. Your testimony was that the neighbors' property, which is very important to us, certainly to me, I've assumed the rest of the board is equally concerned about the neighbors' property's values, that their property values would actually go up as the value of this project goes up, and that if it were a 32-unit project as opposed to a 24-unit project, the neighbors' property values would actually be higher if it was a 32-unit?
I think there's distinction between the neighbors as a 24 or 32, I think in both cases, you're going to have a universe of 24 to 32, single-family residential sales in the area. And that creates a market, and in the, in the current market rate, as you see, as a sale happens, the next sale is X percent higher, we're in an increasing market right now. And that kind of, that amount of sales, that number of sales on each street, I believe would be, um, benefit all the neighbors significantly.
So then, in a sense, then, a 32-unit would actually increase the value of the neighbors' property?
That's 50.
Not that we're, we're not voting, or even considering a 32-unit, but if there were more units, the property values, you think, of the neighbors actually goes up because there's more units available?
Well, I think the more units from the 24 to 32 are strictly about financial feasibility. I don't know there's a distinction between 24 and 32 as far as neighborhood properties. I think they're both, uh, a large universe of sales in a neighborhood that can drive the market, as opposed to three units which may or may not have any impact on anybody else in the area. That was the point I was trying to make.
It was just interesting, because I suddenly pictured a 32-unit being seven stories high instead of four or five, and I didn't think it would help the neighbors' property. But we're not talking about 32, and we're just talking about an increase in units available in that neighborhood, thereby increasing, you think, the neighbors' property?
And that, that number of sales would drive the market up.
I didn't know it did that.
Neighborhood properties.
Anyone else on the board?
Oh, Ms. Ross, yes, one. I'm not sure if this is the right question or not, but Mr. Schaefer's just brought up something that was interesting, I thought. He said that the three lots are 50 by 140, or, let me even correct that, there are two lots, right? There's two lots right now.
We're assuming, we're assuming that the Belmore Inn was sublimated, which is...
That was my que, that was my question, because you, there's been back and forth about three and what the financial feasibility of three is, three, three single-family homes, I think. But currently, there's only two lots there. So any kind of making three would require some action on the part of the town. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
Yeah, yes.
You couldn't come in and build two houses on the Belmore Inn while?
I could, um, without, uh, planning board, uh, as all varies, really, you can monitor subposition.
No, thanks for clearing that up, because I keep hearing three, and I keep looking at the plans, and there's only two lots there, so.
Yeah.
Needs to be an action on the part of the town.
I, I commend your listening and analytical skill, because when I left last time, I, I actually was confusing myself on my lines, because you kept testifying two and three, two and three, two and three. But you're absolutely right, the Belmore Inn is one lot, 100 by 140, oversized, single-family lot, and the other is a undersized 50 by 140.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
I haven't heard any discussion about the removal of what's there. Seems to be, um, the Belmore Inn as it stands, we don't know whether it's got, you know, asbestos, or whatever, but is that calculated into the value of the property? I mean, before you do anything, you'd have to tear that down, and it's a huge building. And it seems to me that's a very expensive thing, because everything has to be disposed of properly and all that kind of stuff. Is that calculated into the value of the property or anything?
The demolition cost of these structures is, that assumes no environmental contamination, or, you know, we don't know that will happen, but the cost to demolish a building is considered as part of the analysis.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board?
I'd just like to maybe pick up on, I know I want to give Mr. Lamisella on to it, but Mr. Hutchinson raised a very important, poignant point. Mr. Lamisella, and correct me, maybe I'm wrong, I believe your report calculated the cost Mr. Hutchinson was asking about demo disposal cost for the construction of 24 or 32 units, correct?
Correct.
I don't see anywhere in your report where you said the value of single-family lots, I think you concluded were 700,000 or so, but I don't think you ever placed in there on top of that 700,000, the 100 or 200, $250,000 of taking down the entire sites and disposal of everything that contains in one of those buildings, correct?
Correct.
Does that address your thought process, Mr. Hutchinson? Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Mr. Kennedy, we had opened it up to the public for Mr. Lamisella last time. Is there any need to open it up again?
Probably, just because there was testimony, there was recross, we probably should.
Okay, with that, we'll open it up to the public. If anyone has questions for Mr. Lamisella, specifically for Mr. Lamisella, and questions, please come forward and, and have a...
Steve Blum, Governor of Forhaston.
Good evening.
Mr. Lamisella?
Just a minute, Mr. Kennedy, sorry.
You know, and were you sworn at the last hearing, athlete, and you're still under oath? Thank you.
Since 2018.
Very good. But at last meeting, you're sworn, so that's good, thanks.
So, Mr. Lamisella, you say that the expense, the buy of the Belmore Inn, the next property's approximately 3.4 million? Something like that?
The property at current cost, we're 3.4 million.
Yes. So, if it costs $200,000 to knock it down, so we're at 3.6 million, correct?
Correct.
So let's say 4 million, let's go $5 million in expenses. So if you had $5 million in expenses, okay, and you put up eight townhomes, and you could build eight townhomes for $250,000 each, and you could sell them for 1.7 or 5 million dollars each, you've got a profit of $7 million.
I object to the form of the question.
Why?
It's a loss, it means there's no lives for reality.
But, but, okay, can it, can it be done for that price? Can you build a house for $250,000 and the house, wait, I'm not done, the house could be 100 foot by 17 feet, you could have four of them, you could have a 10-foot space in between and build another four, you'd be in the guidelines of the five feet on each side, and the backyards could be 40 feet. And you would need a variance, because 40 feet is the minimum for the backyards. So you could build, am I right, a house 17 feet, and it has 17, 18 feet, by 100 feet for 250,000... for $250,000? Am I correct?
I don't know if you're correct, but the principle of highest of best use is, you don't remove the existing structures until you land that, the land value at a different use exceeds that value.
Okay, so the land value on 11th and B, where they just knocked down one home, and they're selling two lots, because they split it in half, do you know what the land value, what they're selling those lots for?
Out of those particular lots, I know...
Take a guess.
Lots are selling for $700,000.
$985,000, and the other one's $975,000.
I object to the form...
But it's listed, it's a public listing.
Yeah. A public listing?
An asking price.
And anything is asking price.
Obviously, Mr. Blum...
And in this market, an asking price goes higher.
Did, Mr. Chairman, this can, I mean, Mr. Blum, with due respect, comes up with this hypothetical, that is pretty silly. So if Mr. Blum had $5 million and wanted to make $7 million, we would do the contract right now, keep it built as a townhouse for $250,000, and I'd be happy to do that as a project.
So you would sell me the property for $5 million?
$5 million right now, if it's...
Gentlemen, could I jump in here? Mr. Blum, this is really a slot for you to ask Mr. Lamisella questions of his report and what was in it. And we have to keep it focused on this application, but not hypotheticals.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else from the public have questions for Mr. Lamisella?
Let's go and get his check.
All right, I see none, so we'll close the public portion, and then it's back to you, Mr. Shipers.
Hold on, is there a topic?
If you want to come speak on the application, please come forward and state your name.
My name's Joseph Grant, I'm homeowner of 111 14th Avenue.
Good evening.
And my question was, is this the time for public comment?
No.
Generally?
This is specifically questions for Mr. Lamisella.
Okay, so I heard you say "public comment" earlier. Will there be time for public comment generally?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, I'll hold till then.
Thank you. Yep, and everybody will get a chance to speak before the end of this application is heard. We will open it up to the public for comment. As we're rolling through with the different experts, we're opening it up to public questions. I mistakenly call that a public comment session, it's a public question session. With that, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lamisella, thank you. With the board's permission, I don't think we're going to need Mr. Lamisella again, you're going to have more comments on it, sincerely, but Mr. Lamisella, I'd like to excuse him.
I have no problem with that, Mr. Brodsky or Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Gersovich?
I'm sorry, is that, we are going to get briefs next week?
Better.
That are going to address this topic?
Yes.
And economic feasibility?
Yes.
So can we reserve the right to have you recall him so that we can question him or raise issues at that point after receiving your briefs and having the opportunity to read them?
Of course, although I think the briefs are just really going to go to the issue of governance and visibility. It's basically a rule 701 or 704, if you're in American, right?
I am, but I don't know if I understand.
Okay. So, it, you know, it, court cases and rulings indicate, in my humble opinion, that this is perfectly appropriate consideration and testimony, and I think Mr. Kennedy will advise you on that. But if you want him ultimately back, I'd just like perhaps to have some forewarning so I can arrange for him to come up.
I have no problem.
The cost, he dresses well. He costs one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers.
Thank you, Mr. Lamisella.
Thank you.
If Ryan Delay is ready to have a vote, he has our next witness.
Do you want Bill to one, if it's a thing, one to stand?
Whatever he's comfortable with, he'll go.
Sit here, come on, take your chair.
Chair. Perfect. All right, so why don't you just state your name for the record?
Ryan Delay, D U L L E I.
D U...
L L E I.
All right, and good evening, and welcome to the Belmar Zoning Board. You can just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best we know, to help you guide?
I do.
Okay, and then just for the record, before we turn it over to Mr. Shipers, you are, Mr. April, you are testifying tonight in your capacity as?
The fire official and fire department administrator for the borough of Belmar.
As fire official and...
Fire department administrator.
Fire department administrator. And just so the record is clear, how long have you been the fire official?
Since 2017.
And how long have you been the fire department administrator?
2019.
Okay, and Mr. Shipers, if you don't mind, may I just ask if Mr. Ryan here just preside any licenses or certifications out yet?
Sure.
Okay.
New Jersey State Certified Fire Official, Fire Inspector, Certified Firefighter, Certified Public Manager, Certified Fire Explosion Investigator, New Jersey, and as well as a fire investigation technician.
Thank you very much. And not to be lost in this, thank you for your service to Belmar, and so, Mr. Shipers, you're a witness, so I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Delay, I'm in receipt...
Yeah, you can take some more stuff.
I'm in receipt of a October 1, 2021...
You know what, I'm sorry, Bill, I just forgot one thing. Mr. Brodsky, did you have any questions or comments about the qualifications of the witness?
No, I don't.
Thank you. All right, sorry, Mr. Shipers.
Mr. Delay, in front of me, I think it was previously marked, I have an October 1, 2021, Belmar Inn zoning board, it looks like a two-page memorandum authored by you regarding this project, is that correct?
That is correct.
And...
And I think for the record, that was B5.
Briefly, for the board, just indicate, does board members have a copy of this?
We do.
Okay. Briefly, just give the foundation of what this document is and what your role with the borough was in formulating this document.
So that document was created based on different regulations, NFA standards, which National Fire Protection Association, ICC codes, and best practices in plan, plan review, pest plan reviews that we produce. What it is, it's looking at the New Jersey Fire Code, looking at the fire department, how they operate, and with the plans presented, our recommendations of the fire department with plan, different features that we would like to see, and just ensuring that different areas are met.
Okay, and this has been supplied by our engineer, Mr. Chairman, to our engineer, Mr. Chairman, I will reserve for later time for our engineer to comment on those. Mr. Delay, you testified, I believe, back in 2018 or 2019 for this board regarding, I believe, inspections and knowledge that you have of Belmar Inn, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I'm going to literally leave the floor to you. Could you give the benefit of your knowledge and experience with the Belmar Inn and discuss from your official capacity what contractions you've had, perhaps citations you've issued, concerns you've had regarding that and/or any impact on surrounding property?
I apologize, this might be a little repetitive from since 2018, but I'm going to go starting from 2017 on my turn, when I became the president for the Belmar. Each year, that building is considered a life hazard to the Division of Fire Safety, and gets an annual inspection, and then other inspections, as needed, either the reinspection or re inspect violations, complaints, referrals from other agencies, such as the Health Department Code enforcement, Police Department, Fire Department, any other agency that might be in there, that sees a hazard that they refer it to us. So starting in 2017, the first inspection there, we noticed that they did not comply with the New Jersey retrofit fire code, which had to bring a building built prior to 1977 up to a certain standard. There was not many standards filed prior to 1977, so they had to bring the building up to a standard, it's called the retrofit to the fire code. With that, the building had a limited area sprinkler system, so only one stairwell in the common area was sprinkler, providing protection, egressway there, but there was open vertical openings that were open. Maintenance issues with the sprinkler heads, all the sprinkler heads were all actually refolded in 1999, and in 2017, they still were not changed out. Different maintenance code violations, such as holes in ceilings, holes in floors, egress doors not functioning properly, doors not plumbing level, and other maintenance violations, such as that. 2017, 2018, we were a board of appeals, so they appealed violations in county court, and they were, it was held up in the process of scheduling an appeal, whatnot. By 2018, it was heard during the appeal process, they withdrew, they signed a time extension. Shortly after that time extension, the building, we entered the building on a complaint for heat, heating complaint, where we did an inspection, we found out that the building actually had no heat, and that the boilers were shut down. Multiple pipes in the building were burst, including the sprinkler system, that was turned off by a man tampered with. Shower curtains were being used to keep space heaters and inside heat. We had to evacuate the building, declare the premise unsafe, issue a punitive closure until repairs were made. With that, we had to evacuate the building. I do not recall how many people were inside the building, but it was enough, it was 20, 20 people, families, all kids, adults, that were evacuated. They were all evacuated to different hotels provided by that, the owner of the premise. From that, it's that vacant for about a year. At that time, we had complaints from neighbors, either when we were doing, you know, drive-by inspect, drive-by checks of the property, see if there's any tampering, we got complaints from neighbors from around the block, that they said they noticed people still inside and outside the hotel, using the fire escape to enter the building. When we conducted the inspection then, we noticed that the window, you know, there wasn't a drawer window, there was paint that flew in the room, people were still occupying the hotel. At that point, the police department cleared the hotel, made sure all the rooms were closed, and they were mandated to come back down and resecure the building, which they did successfully, they complied. At that time, there was fires, alarm violations, panels weren't communicating, devices were in trouble. We actually did observe a fire was lit in the room as well, that was unreported to us. Since then, fast forward, about six months, repairs were made, inspections were conducted, state building housing came out, did their inspection, and they were reopened for business. Since then, we've been inspecting them normally, as prescribed by the code, and as we've received complaints. This year alone, we've been there about 20, 20 times between regular inspections, re-inspections, and complaints. There's fines issued, violations ranging from carbon dioxide detection issues, holes in the ceiling, missing, missing loose stairs that are loose on the egress stairways, so they have two exterior wooden staircases that are constant issues, obviously with the salt care, at some point they were approved to use a wooden staircase rather than a steel staircase. Blums get detached, and railings become loose, it's almost every other year, I think, for issue, and looking at our statistic. The past time, there was a hole, a hole in the stairwell floor, we're robbing, doors not plumbing up, and those vertical enclosures that they had to comply with, that they did, are now not plumbing levels, so the doors aren't latching, so at the time of construction, they, they closed and latched properly. Now it's a yearly basis that we're citing the same violation that, you know, the, either the shifting, moisture in the air, whatever, is not allowing these doors to properly function as intended. They do have current fines, they have been fined, multiple times, but as they've been issued borough summonses under different ordinance, to proxy the maintenance, and that's a quick history of code violations of the Belmar Inn.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Did anyone from the board have questions for Mr. Delay?
I'd like, was, would you consider it a fire hazard? With the maintenance violation, I would say with the maintenance violation, yes, it is a fire hazard. Missus of different appliances, the accumulation of storage and combustibles, the egress hazards that, you know, that are just continual, you know, that get repaired, and then a year later, that we're in the same boat. You know, at the time of the reinspection, they are complying with the code, it's just over time, things are warping or workmanship.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Gates.
So, it was found that in 2017, with all of the, in 2018, when they were, it was deemed unsafe, and all these corrections were made, and now we're finding the same, we're finding...
We're finding continual, it seems to be continual maintenance violations, I mean, when we do inspections, like, it's our job to find these violations.
Sure.
We issue them regularly to a lot of establishments, you know, pretty much every business, but this property seems to have what we call a lot of reoccurring mistakes. We do inspect a lot of hotels, just speaking, I just looked this up today, just to compare to, try to see where our resources are going, and the Belmar Inn since 2017, we've had 73 type inspections, whether I did the reinspection, the complaints, the regular inspections, compared to something like the Mayfair, we're at like 25 inspections since 2017 at a similar type establishment.
Okay, and my question is, when is it decided if the building is deemed unsafe again, and that people need to be moved down? So is this going to be a continual thing where...
So, so it's deemed a building under the fire code unsafe, a presence of explosive type gas, in this case, it was the boiler, there was major gas that nobody reported. We just happened to be in the building, smelled the gas, boiler was actually riding in multiple locations, natural gas flowing up the basement. So that was our necessary means to close it, but there's about five situations where you can close a building. Structural, you know, presence of gas, anything like that, an emergency scene, there's five reasons for that.
So is it reasonable to assume that without those five of these reasons to find it, that you'd have to abandon it, that this can continue to go on for a long time, where they do the minimum or whatever needs to be repaired, and then in a year it goes away, and you're back in the same situation, and no real changes are made?
I mean, we monetarily find them for noncompliance, we have, you know, worked with them, different time extensions that have failed to be made, during certain things, that's how they get the monetary, but, yes, it seems, year to year, it is reoccurring, both on management and tenants, I guess you could say. Management, you know, building features, but then when we go to the rooms, we get the space heaters, we get the extension cords, we get the remote power strips, excessive use of those power strips, it's an older building, they have probably about one to two outlets in each room, so, you know, the electric is a commodity, which are all unknown hazards to the occupants, but yes, it is something we see similar.
Okay, and so it seems to be a pattern that, do you, and I know you can't look into a crystal ball, but do you envision that this behavior or this maintenance pattern is going to change anytime?
Since 2017, it does not look, there was hope, when they did redo the building, redo the pipes, I was optimistic. For about six months there, we were in good shape. I wouldn't say best word, but we were progressing, but since then, with, you know, I guess employment turn, every time I go in there, it's a new employee, you know, longevity, the employees and the, has been a changer, so I could probably say that would be, that the educated employees that we educate when we go in there are leaving, and then it just becomes a free-for-all until we either get called back there or we're there for a yearly inspection.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a question also, in your opinion, if a fire were to occur at this site, the feasibility of it engulfing some of the neighboring homes, in your opinion, would that be a great possibility, slight possibility?
It's always a possibility, so, you know, fires depend on, you know, your weather conditions, what's going on outside, how fast they get there, you know, what's in the room? You know, is it a vacant room, is it an occupied room, is there more combustible material? Is it in the rear of the building, side of the building? There's a lot of factors that go in. Obviously, there's a wooden structure in the building the way it is, it's a combustible building, so if you get a fire on the outside, or, you know, the membrane roofing, you know, it obviously produces a great amount of heat and can travel to what means a heat transfer.
When you speak of all these violations, electrical heaters, these are definitely attachment for that building to catch on fire.
No, it increases the risk.
We have those standbites working, horizontal rods are not working, horizontal...
In that building, the only protection it has is the common area, limited sprinkler In that building, the only protection it has is the common area, limited sprinkler system, which is the west side of the building, so it's similar to an H-type building, what we call, is the main arteries in the middle, and you have the two wings on the side. The west side of the building is sprinkled in the hallway, so that's, the second and third floor have a limited area sprinkler system, so it doesn't go into your occupant rooms, it's in a common area. It's meant for egress escape, you know, protecting your egress, without the plumbing level doors, without the door closers, that's when the, you know, the heat and fire gets exposed into that, creating a hazardous atmosphere. Also, in the common area, to include the basement, is, in the hallways, is a fire alarm system, monitor fire alarm system. So if they do activate, there is a response immediately, but that does not include the rooms. The rooms all have a local smoke detector, that's a ten-year steel battery, that we, they have to test, actually, it's monthly, then we get the logs from, all that, but the fire protection in that building is very limited. The monitor, the alarm system's a plus, but like I said, it only is the hallways and the basement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Blenkin?
Yes, couple of questions. What is your regular routine inspections on that building?
When do they occur, the frequency? We try to get, we did, they're around the end.
Once a year?
Yeah, once a year is the annual inspection, and then as a new basis for complaints, spot checks, anything along the line.
And if somebody has a complaint, you're called in?
Yeah, we get called in pretty regularly on a complaint. Typically, if the health department's there for a complaint, they're contacting us for, you know, a similar thing. The consumer safety data, or consumer safety from the federal agency, they've done their own investigations, we've had to assist them, code enforcement has been called there. If the police department's there for EMS, home notices, something such as, you know, water condition, something like that, we do get called here, stuff like that as well.
So how many complaints would you say you service a year?
This year, we, I just looked it up. This year, we have been there for our annual, five complaints and ten re-inspections.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Can I say about Ryan's?
Yes, Ryan.
Ryan, thanks, thanks for coming tonight. Do you know what the recourse that the town would have under the current situation, status quo, in terms of trying to get this situation addressed with the current owner, and how that building's currently managed?
Yeah, so it falls, actually, it's a state-licensed building, it's state-licensed by the Bureau of Rooming and Hotels, Bureau of Housing and Hotels, so it's regulated under their administration. We're there for the, I guess, the fire, the common areas under the fire code, and even the occupant rooms. The Borough has property maintenance authority, and they do issue a local license for that as well, I'm not sure what the process would be for that. I believe since they do have a state license, it ultimately is in the state's hands, where we have, we forward pretty much all our reports to them, anything imminent that we feel, we see, we report to them, we do not get the feedback.
Is there anything more that the town coter should be doing to try to bring this closer compliance, or make the building safer?
We're enforcing the codes as it is.
It's a cat mask.
Yeah, we're kind of-
Understood, understood. And now, this is a more difficult question for me to ask, because I haven't personally had a problem with what's happening down at Sidoros, where they're allowed to just put a plywood on the building, and have the building be abandoned, but there's nothing the town can do about that, right?
Correct, yeah, as long as-
If they, if there were a disaster, God forbid, and I hope there isn't, but if there were to be a disaster, and plywood goes up on all these windows, and as long as they pay their taxes and mow the lawn, the building could stay with plywood up forever, is that correct? Because Sidoros, it's twenty years already with the plywood up. So apparently, there's nothing the town could do when someone boards up a property, as long as the taxes continue to get paid.
Correct, we require them to mark the building, you might have seen the Yeshiva on eleven, they have to remove all the storage, you can't use the building for storage in this and that, so all your combustible materials have to be removed. If it has fire alarm, you have to keep fire alarm active, if your sprinkler system, you have to, your sprinkler system active.
I hope the crystal ball is wrong, but that seems like it could be the future of what could happen here, if this property is not either rehabilitated by the current owner, to try to get it into compliance, make it safe, okay, or something else gets done with that property. Those seem to be the only two choices, to try to get this thing back to a property that's not a problem in town.
Under the fire code, we commission, or we commission violations, we have to give them a period of time to comply, and then it goes to monetary lines after that.
Thank you. Keep after it, keep looking.
Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, just quickly, you had spoken to quite a few different violations, one of which was a major gas leak. A major gas leak would be quite devastating, could be quite devastating to the entire neighborhood, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, correct, yes, if a gas explosion in that building, connected to the incoming service, yes.
And spreading to just not the absolute adjacent neighbors, but even further out?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Brodsky, did you have anything?
Just a quick question, Mr. Dula. So, has the building been ordered to be vacated currently?
It hasn't been passed, yes.
Currently?
Not currently.
Okay, so is the building, are there open violations today?
There is open violations.
And what are, what is the enforcement mechanism for that?
The enforcement, so we give them their thirty days that we give every single business in town, if it's an imminent hazard, we give fifteen. We go from there, we go and do our re-inspections, after the third inspection, we issue our penalty, and then we continue to work with them, get through that. If and only when the violations are evaded, can we negotiate that type of penalty.
Got it.
So penalties get issued, and then we, you know, we try to work with them, and educate them as best we can to get compliance.
Great, and the building has not been ordered to be closed, or anything like that?
Not since two thousand eighteen.
Since two thousand eighteen. And it's not boarded up, or anything?
Not since two thousand eighteen.
Since two thousand eighteen. So, and you're saying that the authority to do that would fall with the state of New Jersey?
No, I said that their boarding, their hotel license is within the state of New Jersey.
So if-
The shutdown of a building, if it's applicable, would be under the fire code, it could be under the construction code, it could be under code enforcement.
Got it.
There's different mechanisms in place, depending on the situation, that would require that building to be closed.
So that power would fall within the town, within the borough?
Yes, yeah, like I said, it's structural, explosive gases, except some-
And that, there's no outstanding order to that effect, right?
Not at this moment.
Okay, no further questions?
Thank you. Would anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Dula? Please come forward. Someone right behind you. Name and address, please?
R. Ammermuller, one zero six twelve M.
Can you spell your last name? Okay, did I spell your last name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, here's my question basically, sure. Would a more conscientious ownership be able to fix these issues and keep them fixed?
I would, I would say educated, long jeopardy of employment, yeah, you know, with those issues pertaining to the guest room violations, you'd kind of see him transferring from people to people.
Yes, my concern is, you know, we blame the residents, are the residents possibly, you know, the people who are staying there, they possibly-
The guests?
Guests.
I would say they add to the problem.
So, the problem is the guests, and also the ownership, that doesn't seem to do anything, or they do the minimal they can do to keep the place open, is that seems to be the problem?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Next.
John Walsh, B Street.
And were you previously sworn in? I can't remember.
No.
Okay, if you could just raise your right hand, swear that information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you're providing, will be the truth and best you know, and to help you guide. Thank you.
Is the building up to code now?
No.
No.
There's still open maintenance violations. They haven't complied with the retrofit, but they're lacking where, I talked about the vertical opening, so that's your stairwell open from the first floor to the third floor, the doors don't properly close, so it's not closing that vertical opening lock, and under smoke conditions with the turbulence, it would break the seal.
I'm not, whatever, but I'm survived for twenty-eight years in Manhattan, so I know all about this stuff. But there was things that we can do. If the violation is that bad, you could do it forthwith, that you close this thing down, forthwith, and get this fixed, and that'd be fixed in twenty-four hours or whatever. And I know that the state has more power than you guys, right?
No, that is not true.
That's not true?
No, the state works in conjunction with us.
Oh, okay. But usually, they're-
They're there for assistance, they have access to this building numerous times with us.
Do they have a fire safety officer there?
They do, they do, yeah, they have state fire marshals.
They're there all the time?
In the state, no, no, in, in, in the-
No, in the-
In the end, no, they do not.
They don't?
No, they have a desk worker and maybe a couple of employees on staff, for my experience.
You could get a fire safety officer, does every major hotel, whatever, it's got a hundred thirty rooms, right, is that what it's got?
No.
How many rooms is that?
Forty rooms, I believe, twenty-eight?
Forty-eight? That's pretty big.
Forty, one each side, I think.
That's pretty big. All I'm saying is that this stuff can be taken care of, I'm not just, I'm not trying to put this on you.
So that would be, yeah, no, no, but that would not be under the New Jersey fire code, that would have to be something adopted locally, as an ordinance for every hotel, you can't just-
I mean, the things I was talking about forthwith, is something, you said, oh, that's-
So would that, that would be-
That does a lot.
So that would be considered imminent hazard?
Right.
There's five, there's, like I said, for the closing, there's also a certain criteria that makes it an imminent hazard, if it hits one of those hazards, they have three days to fix it, if they don't fix it, they're done. If it was something forthwith, like you just said, like that, that would be a punitive closing, an emergency evacuation, which we have had to institute in the past, but the current violations that they have, or maintenance violations, they don't, they don't meet the-
They don't mean a safety violent violation?
They're not what we call an imminent hazard.
Okay, all right, I just, and it's, you don't think of making them get a fire safety officer?
I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah.
I don't know the legality behind that, I know, we do Spring Lake, we do Spring Lake Heights, and we do Lake Como, and we have buildings like the Essex and Sussex, the Breakers Hotel.
And they have fire safety officers?
They don't have, no, no, nobody does.
Oh, wow.
So, it's, it's within the management to produce an emergency operations plan, and conduct drills, when we do our inspections, we get drill records at frequency, where we observe them, but it's, they're only required to provide that.
That's all I have to say about that. Oh, the other one thing I do have to say is about the major gas leak, any house that leaks gas is a major gas leak. So any house, whether it's the Belmar Inn, or Joe's Bungalow, is a major gas leak.
Correct.
So, when you bring that up and say, well, that's, blow up the house next door, a propane tank could blow up the house next door. So, I just wanted to bring that up, you know, there's that, oh, there's a gas leak, everybody's, and I had a gas leak, I go to the gas company, they came to fix it, and so, that there, we can throw out about the major gas leak, that could happen to anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public with questions for Mr. Dula? Questions, right? Come forward, please.
Mr. Fitzgerald brought up a good point about if there was a fire, or the building got closed down, it could be boarded up, and it could remain like that for a long time, if the taxes and everything was paid, correct?
I believe that's what he said, yes.
But that could happen to anybody's house in town, correct?
Correct, yeah, I think you mentioned Sidoros property, the Yeshiva.
So, the Yeshiva too?
Yes.
So that could happen to anybody's property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close that type of question section, back to Mr. Shipers.
Thank you, Mr. Dula, my next witness would be the code enforcement officer, Mr. Brodsky.
Hello, good evening, if you could just state your name for the record, please?
Robert P. O. S. N.
Okay, and do you swear that the information and testimony, or if you just raised your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide? Perfect, have a seat, if you feel uncomfortable doing so, and just for the record, could you state your affiliation right now?
I am the director of code enforcement for the Borough of Belmar.
All right, director of code enforcement for Borough of Belmar, and how long have you held that title?
About a few years.
Okay, and Mr. Shipers, do you mind if I ask him what his licenses and certifications are, they don't?
No, I would just ask, just for the board's perspective, instead of looking at the facts or pop's head, maybe you could spin around and move the mic, have the ability to address the board.
If you could just state what licenses and certifications you hold?
I hold a building inspector's license from Ocean County College in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, and Mr. Brodsky, do you have any questions regarding the qualifications or licenses of the witness?
No.
Thank you. Shipers, up to you.
Thank you. Mr. Puff, I think you said person employed by the Borough of Belmar, correct?
Correct.
And code enforcement, correct?
Correct.
And, I think maybe just been asking for a moment, how long has it been someone employed?
Going on forty years.
Okay, and I'm not gonna ask you many questions, I'm gonna pretty much ask you, did you have an opportunity to review, either in two, you testified in two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen for this board on this property, correct?
I did.
And did you have an opportunity to either review your testimony, and/or review the, I'll call it, the Oprah binder, which was police, fire, rescue, code enforcement, health calls to the Belmar Inn? Tell the board what you had an opportunity to do to prepare for, okay, so may I?
I really did not prepare.
You know, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the mic, just so we can hear you very-
No, I didn't want to review, so I wanted to tell you what's been going on for the last year, year and a half, that the last time I testified, especially working with the fire department, and the board health, and the county, how many times I've been there, I couldn't tell you how many times I've walked through that place, even today, during the summer, I've walked through there and found cigarette butts all over the place. You know, so, it's just amazing what goes on in that place, the garbage, they just throw mattresses out the backyard when you're there, gas cans are against the building, and they're smoking on top of the staircase. The place is only, it's gonna happen someday, this place is gonna go up, it's a tinderbox, it's gonna go up.
Can you give the board an approximation, just so you understand, let's say a little bit of the foundation for your testimony, Mr. Puff, we're not allowed to necessarily reincorporate your prior testimony, because Mr. Brodsky behind you has the ability, needs the ability to cross-examine any testimony that goes in with the board, so I can't ask them to adopt your eighteen testimony, so I have to take you back to eighteen, so, or whenever direct election goes back to what you've been dealing with, and if it goes back forty years, take it back forty years, and succinctly, but give the board the information you know about code violations that you've had to deal with on whatever levels, and what other borough manpower and departments that you have interacted with, please?
There's also a special two police officer in the Borough of Belmar, where I just find it's many, this is, what, COVID, this is only a person calls there, many of them, I couldn't even tell you how many, drunk, disorderies, domestics, you know, going back all these years, and the worst is when I saw it, was when I was with the board out, back in eighteen, when they had no heat there, dinner winter, it was January, February, the coldest days of the year, and they had nothing there, and the people were just freezing up there. Actually, amazing that people actually stayed there, I don't have any, you know, county could submit statements, I don't know, I couldn't tell you how many summonses I wrote here, summon, just keep writing summonses, write some.
You know, can you just move the mic a little closer, so everyone can hear you, even those people in the back?
So I'm not, not sure where we're gonna go with this. So I'm not sure where we're going to go with this place, but it's just a disaster. Something's got to get done.
When you say tons of summonses, can you give an approximation perhaps on an annual basis? How many summonses do you think you would issue for the place?
Probably 20, especially the summer, I think I wrote that many of these.
And that's for summer?
Just for summer, yes. And it may not be to the hotel individually, it could be to an individual doing something on the property like smoking inside or whatever.
And what other police agencies or parts of Belmar? I'm looking for a manpower type of assessment, if you're able to give. Who, where is our public funds or Belmar's public funds? How's it being allocated over there? What department and who are you interacting on a regular basis?
Well, I'm mainly with code enforcement now. I'm no longer with the police department. But we're probably spending, I think, tenths of thousands of dollars there a year between fire calls, first aid calls, police calls, me getting called, the county getting called, and then we have to call the state in. It's got to be tenths of thousands of dollars we spend in taxpayers' money just to go there and try to settle problems.
The Oprah documents that are part of our record that the board has the opportunity to review, the natures and the types of calls, I'd proper indicate to you, seems to be that there's at least a police incident report once a week at the Belmar Inn for the past, where our went back, I think, 2016 or '17. Does that jive or comport with your recollection and your interactions?
That's possibly correct. And how many calls that we don't even report, we just do walkthroughs?
Let me ask you this. Belmar has a fair amount of garden apartments and condominiums units in the town, does it not?
Yes, it does.
And can you give any comparison about the intensity of demand on public services that the Belmar Inn may have on an annual basis versus any of the other garden apartments or condo complexes within the town that you routinely interact with?
There is no comparison. It stands alone by itself.
And just elaborate, I think we all know what that means, but what, how many calls would you get to a garden apartment complex or a condo complex on an annual basis?
Maybe one a year.
And how about when you do your inspections, how many required inspections do you have to do in apartment?
Every time there's a vacancy and then somebody is, you know, once they vacate and a new tenant comes in, I do an inspection.
Okay. So from a manpower, let me proper, you have some knowledge of what's been proposed here to the 24-unit condo unit?
Someone.
Do you have a professional opinion as to what type of demand for services such a project would have compared to the Belmar Inn?
Mr. Chairman, I have to object to that question. I don't, witness can answer, I don't see how I could constantly predict the future, but go right ahead.
All right, so we'll note your objection, you can answer your question and a question if you have an answer.
My personal opinion could be a great asset to demolish the hotel and build whatever is proposed by everybody here.
I have definitely a very good response.
Thank you. Last time, Mr. Brodsky, open it up to the board for questions first. Would you like to go first?
Oh, I just have one question. Mr. Puff?
Yep.
Would it be your opinion that the development of the property with three single-family homes or in accordance with the applicable zoning, in your personal opinion, as you say, would that be your preference over the existing hotel?
I have no preference.
Okay. So you would have no preference as to three single-family homes versus the existing Belmar Inn?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board questions for anyone? None? All right, we'll open it up to the public for questions.
And Mr. Chairman, I just have one quick question, just, Mr. Puff, I think when I'd asked you, you said you've been director of code enforcement for about five years, correct?
Correct.
And then I think you said to Mr. Scheifers, you've been an employee of Belmar for 40 years?
Going on 40 years.
Okay. And just what, some of those capacities in your 40 years, just so that I can note that for the record.
I was a special two police officer, and I worked with code enforcement during the summertime.
Got it.
Doing inspections and always been doing inspections.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we're back to the public. If anyone had any questions for Mr. Puff, please come forward.
Name?
Robert Amermohr.
Thank you.
Hey, Robert.
Hi.
Your previous this morning.
Right. Okay, what constitutes a noise violation?
Anything, when a code reads anything that disturbs the public or neighbors, could be anything that disturbs neighbors.
Anything that, like, anything that disturbs a neighbor?
It could be 24 hours a day, too, it's enforced.
So if I'm at my house and somebody has a deck that's 15 feet from my house and they're making noise, I could...
If it's disturbing, if it's disturbing, you can call the police department, and they will enforce it. They'll tell me to turn the music down or be quiet or move inside. Do it all the time.
Okay. So if I was on my property and there were six decks within 20 feet of me, it's quite possible I'd be making a lot of noise violations, wouldn't I?
It's possible.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Presto, 11013th Ave.
And your previous editor of the conference, thank you.
So I have a question for you about the garbage, the cigarettes, smoking on the porch, and some of the things I mentioned. Do you see that at rental units as well?
We're talking about two different things.
No, no, exactly the same question as to...
You're talking about hotels and you're talking about rental units.
Yeah, like the rental units right across the street, do you see the same type of issues?
I haven't known. I have closed houses across the street because of code violations that I thought needed to be closed until they were remedied.
Okay, because I do notice cigarette butts in front of homes. I see kids, people smoking on porches, 50 kids in a house at times, and even directly across from the Belmar Inn, we see a number of rental units there.
Correct.
And in my opinion, if something happens to the Belmar Inn and it's cleaned up and sold and something beautiful's built up there, those units across the street are going to fall soon.
Exactly, so we could put another 24 units across the street.
They're individual homes.
We're talking about an individual home.
How are you going to get an individual home, you know? They're just going to build a nice house.
Well, I don't know, you make the same argument. I believe you would apply there as well. That's my question.
Okay, thank you.
Just name again for the record?
John Walsh, B Street.
Previously sworn, thank you.
You said about first aid that they use in the law service, right? So the first aid now is getting charged, not a free thing anymore, so they're going to get paid, so they don't care how many times they're going to go there, because Medicaid's going to pay for those things. And second of all...
I think that's his question and answer.
Yeah, and this is specifically questions for Mr. Puff. You'll have a chance to comment later.
Okay, well, you were saying about the, you know, that it was rallying and all that. Well, we do what they do with the bars, we make them hire a police officer, and they pay for it, and then we don't have to send people there.
Mr. Walsh, we can't even hire police officers anymore. Where are we getting them from? Nobody wants to be a police officer today.
They're hiring people at the bars, they're already police officers, they're working overtime or they get the charge but...
They're already police officers.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not saying that.
Mr. Walsh, Mr. Puff, could I just ask you to just focus on the application in front of us instead of highlighting this? We have a lot of people here.
I'm asking, if it's so bad, why can't they hire a police officer like they hire at Belmar?
I understand your question, I'm not sure Mr. Puff is the right person to answer that question.
Okay.
Because we're speaking on the Belmar Inn application. Did you have questions for Mr. Puff regarding the Belmar Inn application?
This actually pertains to this. If it's that bad, why don't they, why don't we make them, just like we make the bars, hire a police officer? And then it's not on, that's not on the taxpayer's... We're not paying for it, they are. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I don't have an answer for you. Do you have any more questions?
Okay, no, that's all I, one way I got to say.
Okay.
But thank you, it's not against you.
No, no.
And I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right.
Mr. Chairman, just, I had a question in regards to something that Mr. Puff just said, so if it's okay.
Sure.
So we were asking the fire marshal in terms of enforcement and how many times, you know, you're telling me code enforcement, and sometimes you determine these houses need to be shut down. So you're telling me how many times and the resources that it's taken for code enforcement, how much time to spend there. What are the requirements or what would get you to the point where they would be closed down because of all these code violations?
Anything with life-threatening situation.
So you haven't found that it's got to that point yet where it's life-threatening? You have all these violations, but it's not severe enough or...
Yeah, last time we closed a place, I think, was the Belmar Inn, myself...
With the boiler?
And the boiler and the board health also.
So from what I'm hearing from both that people that were testifying is that basically all you can do is keep just finding them and pointing out violations, but you are not, it's not within your authority, either one of them, to at some point shut them down unless certain criteria are met.
Oh, no, I, oh, exactly.
Okay, that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, last call for questions for Mr. Puff. All right, I see none. Thank you, Mr. Puff.
You're welcome.
All right, it's almost 7:50. Sounds like a good time for a break for me. Why don't we meet back here at 8 o'clock?
And Mr. Brodsky just have to grab this.
Are you ready to go this one?
I certainly am.
All right.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Ms. Hattson?
Here.
Mr. Ben?
Here.
Mr. Fashada?
Here.
Mr. Liska?
Here.
Mr. Maliko?
Here.
Mr. Popol?
Here.
Mr. McKee?
Here.
Mr. Wong?
Here.
Mr. Zammit?
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I think when I spoke with Mr. Scheifers earlier, I know Mr. Fitzgerald was a minute late to the meeting, but when we did call, Chuck Ross said, oh, by the way, I'm no longer up today. So just for the record, for record keeping purposes, Mr. Fitzgerald was here from the very, very beginning of this application and is absolutely entitled to vote and all those good things, and thank that.
And Mr. Popol?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kent. All right, Mr. Brodsky.
Okay, thank you again, David Brodsky, for the applicant. At this point, we're going to call Mr. Falco as our planner, and he's ready to swear as an engineer.
Okay, and Mr. Falco, you recognize you're still under oath, correct?
Yes, I do.
And just correct me, when you were, your qualifications were accept, presented and accepted, I believe you indicated and you set forth your planning credentials as well, correct?
I believe I did, it was back in, what, 18?
Oh, no, no, I mean, you were...
Oh, yeah, last hearing, yeah.
You were sworn in as an engineer and a planner, correct? Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Falco, I'm just going to give you an opportunity to present your planning testimony, but before we do, you have another exhibit that we'd like to have marked.
Yes, so on the easel to my right is an exhibit which is the site plan that was redrawn to reflect the narrowed entrance and exit one-way driveways that was agreed to by the applicant at a prior hearing.
All right, so let me just, are we marking that? So that's 835, and what is 835?
835 is a plan entitled impervious cover plan. She won't update it today, it's the October 14th.
All right, it's prepared by...
Prepared by myself. And it's a color, it's colorized, that the green color reflects a landscape or a grass surface, and the brown color represents the pavers which are impervious to the point of a 50% impervious credit. The building is the white area within the center of the property. The reason we did this was we agreed to narrow the driveway, but we had never supplied the board with the calculation of what would the new impervious coverage be if we did that. So this plan, together with the Mary Herm rooftop plan, which has about 400 square feet of planting bed on the roof, which will be piped to the underground filtration area, taking that into account, the site has a 74% impervious coverage at this point versus the 80 and change that it had when it was initially submitted to the board.
Thank you. I'm going to give you an opportunity to present your planner's testimony.
Can I ask a quick question just on that issue? Just to keep it separate from the planning?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. The board's... Yeah, so just on that, so I just want to make sure I understand. So now the maximum lot coverage that's proposed, you said, is what?
74%. 74%.
Okay, where 55% is permitted?
He's going to testify as...
I'm sorry?
He's going to testify as...
Okay, you want to tell me that secret? Okay.
All right.
So, and then... Let me ask something. What would the coverage be if you didn't take the 50% credit?
I wouldn't know how to do that. All right, so I prepared a report on the application. The applicant, Edelen Investment Group LLC and 108 12th Avenue, Belmar We Devco LLC, proposes to develop and rehabilitate the sites at 108, 108 and a half, and 112, 12th Avenue, lot 12 and 13, block 110, and the Borough of Belmar, which is in need of redevelopment.
And Mr. Falco, excuse me, just so that I'm clear, I don't want to... Is this a report that we have or not have?
No, this is verbal testimony.
Verbal.
Verbal, okay, thank you.
Lot 13 contains a two-story front house with two living units and a rear structure comprising one living unit, 11 bedrooms. The property has been seasonally and winter rented. It's a three-family lot with a history of recent drug dealings and arrests. It is also classified an animal house within the borough. Lot 12 contains the 40-room Belmar Inn. It possesses illegal occupancy in excess of 80 persons. It is a hotel rooming house. It has suffered from deferred maintenance, has outlived its useful lifespan, and as will be described, has been drained on municipal services and has stigmatized the neighborhood. No parking exists on-site for payments of the Belmar Inn. Redevelopment on the block has been stalled by the inn's existence compared to most blocks in the borough. borough. The August twenty sixteen master plan reexamination report and update identifies and examines the major problems and objectives related to land development as promulgated by the municipal land use law. The twenty sixteen reexam is the most current realization of the borough's vision and what it anticipates and the visions as the future of the borough. Our office has reviewed the twenty sixteen reexam in an effort to display that the proposed development, as noted, advances that vision and will beneficially promote the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinances of the borough. This report examines the problems associated with existing structures and use and its existing impact to surrounding properties in the borough, the layout of the property, and the beneficial impacts and special reasons for renting of the use varies associated with the proposed development. Therefore, it will also demonstrate the master plan advances and benefits to the public good associated with the proposed use improvement, that there are no significant negative impacts associated with the proposed use and improvement, and that the lot is particularly suitable for the proposed use. A unique R seventy-five zone. This unique R seventy-five zone contains a multifamily conditional use provision which allows attached multifamily townhouse style use as a conditional use upon this unique site. The mayor and council, when enacting said ordinance, realized that the existing R seventy-five residential zone made it impractical and not feasible to expect ongoing commercial landowners to redevelop single-family homes upon the commercial sites. It is also clear that mayor and council had two particular properties that possessed the requisite existing criteria to fit this unique multifamily hotel blocks, that this unique multifamily conditional use had mined when enacting the ordinance. The Mayfair Hotel Rooming House and Ocean and Tenth and the Annex and the Bellmar Inn. While all the properties between Ocean Avenue and A and Tenth and Twelve possess the minimum lot size, only two others, 120 Tenth Avenue condo complex and 102 Tenth Avenue, that two-and-a-half-story apartment building possessed the necessary multifamily dwellings. The condo complex and apartment building are former complexes and not likely to candidate for redevelopment. Chapter forty-six point thirteen, entitled Multifamily Cluster Development Ordinance Number Two Thousand Eight Oh Seven, Paragraph One, A. The multifamily cluster development is permitted as a conditional use to allow for the transition from existing high-density residential uses exceeding seven dwelling units per acre, hotels and boardinghouses, and to provide for the creation of a multifamily attached townhouse-style cluster development within the R seventy-five residential zone. The properties east of A Street with frontages on Ten, Eleventh, and/or Twelfth Avenue to be designated MF seventy-five Zone District and developed with a shared access lane providing entry to attached accessory large structures. The zone requires a minimum lot size of fourteen thousand square feet. The size of the Bellmar Inn is the target property intended for MF seventy-five. Minimum lot diameter one hundred feet, frontage of the Bellmar Inn, the original lot. Front yard setback twenty feet, side yard setbacks five feet each side, rear yard ten feet, height three stories and thirty-five feet. FAR applicable to R seventy-five shall not apply where density permitted is not exceeded. So, the current application before you, we've made a comparison to the MF seventy-five zone versus our proposal. While the applicant seeks relief under section NJ SA forty fifty-five D seven, D one, the MF seventy-five conditional use allows the board to consider variance relief under section NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy, D three. So, we apply for a D one use variance, but the board also can consider this under the MF seventy-five as a D three variance, as we need variance from several of the conditions in the MF seventy-five criteria. The MF conditional use hereby permits townhouse-style structures as a permitted use. The applicant's condominium-style redevelopment substantially complies with the borough's intent for density redevelopment. As such, our proposal meets the use requirements of the MF seventy-five zone, and the application requires D three as several of the conditions of the MF criteria are not complied with.
So, Mitch, if I could stop this for a second, just to give the, you a breather and give the board some, some point of reference. So, what you're suggesting here is that there's a, the township has adopted an MF seventy-five zone that would be particularly suited for this piece of property because it meets the area dimensions?
Location and area.
And it also meets the density requirements for existing houses on property, correct?
Yes.
So, under those circumstances, this property satisfies the criteria to be considered part of the MF seventy-five zone?
I believe so, yes.
And when considering deviations from a conditional use of property, the D three designation is to be considered, not just the D one? That's what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay. Please continue.
The board has the power to grant the D three conditional use variance pursuant to forty fifty-five D seventy, D three. In particular cases and for special reasons, this is so-called positive criteria of a D three variance. As pertains to the positive criteria of a D three variance, the board's focus must be on whether the site remains appropriate for the conditional use despite the failure to conform to all of the ordinance's conditions. Coventry Square versus Westwood Board of Adjustment, one thirty-eight NJ two eighty-five, two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-four. The standard does not require a finding that the site is particularly suitable for the use as in the case of a D one use variance. This is so because the use is permitted, albeit conditionally, and it is the conditions attached to the use from which deviations are sought. The board may not exercise its power to grant a D three variance otherwise warranted, however, unless a so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. Pursuant to the last letter and paragraph of NJ SA forty fifty-five D dash seventy, no variance or other relief may be granted without a showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The phrase zone plan is used in forty fifty-five D seventy means a master plan, as per MDDG versus DPR Co. As to the negative criteria of the D three conditional use variance, the Coventry Square Court held that the strict requirements applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the first prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, Coventry Square, one thirty-eight NJ at two ninety-nine. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use variance case must be on whether conditions can be imposed on its approval to ensure that deviations from the conditional requirements do not cause substantial detriment to the public good. In East Brunswick versus East Brunswick Board of Ed, two fifteen NJ twenty-six, forty-three dash forty-six, twenty thirteen, the court held that the strict requirements applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the second prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether granting a variance would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use variance case must be on whether conditions can be imposed and be imposed in its approval to ensure that deviations from the conditional use requirements do not cause substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance, whether the proposal was reconcilable with the zone. Now, under the, under the D one, the application was filed and a notice was prepared. It was also listed in the notice that we needed a variance to the floor requirements. D four variance is required for variance to the floor condition. The board has the power to grant D four variances to permit an increase in the permitted floor area ratio, FAR pursuant to NJ SA forty fifty-five D seven, D four. In particular cases and for special reasons, this is so-called the positive criteria of a D four variance. As pertains to the positive criteria, the appellate division has held that a D four floor variance is more akin to a D three conditional use variance than a D one use variance, so that the board's focus must be on whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with proposed permitted use, but with a larger floor area than permitted by ordinance. Where in Elk Town Center versus Randolph, three twenty-four NJ Super, four twelve, four sixteen, appellate division nineteen ninety-nine, holding that the standard enunciated in Coventry Square versus Westwood Board of Ed, a report of adjustment, one thirty-eight NJ two eighty-five, two ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-four, pertaining to D three conditional use variances applies to D four FAR variances. A D four FAR variance applicant need not show that the property is particularly suited for more intensive development. The board may not exercise its power to grant a D four variance otherwise warranted, however, unless a so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. Pursuant to the last unlettered paragraph of NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy, no variance or other relief may be granted without a showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The phrase zone plan is used in NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy means master plan. Under the Randolph Town Center rationale, the board's focus for putting a negative criteria in a D four variance is identical to a three-D conditional use variance case, namely, determining whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that deviations from the FAR requirements do not cause substantial detriment to the public good and substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The Coventry Square Court held that the strict requirements applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the first prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, Coventry Square, one thirty-eight NJ at two ninety-nine. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use case must be on whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that the deviations from the conditional use requirements do not cause substantial detriment to the public good. In East Brunswick versus East Brunswick Board of Ed, two fifteen NJ twenty-six, forty-three to forty-six, twenty thirteen, the court held that the strict requirements applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the second prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether granting a variance would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use variance case must be on whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that the deviations from the conditional use requirements do not cause substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance, and whether the proposal was reconcilable with the zone. The application under the MF seventy-five would also require a D five variance or density from the density condition requirement of the MF seventy-five zone. The board has the power to grant D five variances to permit an increase in the permitted density, which means the permitted number of dwellings per gross acre of land to be developed pursuant to NJ SA forty fifty-five D seven, D five. In particular cases and for special reasons, this is so-called positive criteria of a D five variance. While our courts have held that the promotion of the general welfare is the zoning purpose that most clearly amplifies the meaning of special reasons, and that benefits to the general welfare from the typical commercial use derives not from the use itself, but from the development of the site and the community that is particularly suited for the very enterprise proposed, the DC versus DPR Co., one oh seven NJ one, nineteen eighty-seven. Our courts have held that a D five density variance is more akin to a D three conditional use variance than a D one use variance, so that the board's focus should be on whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed higher density than permitted by ordinance. Grubbs versus Slott Howard, three eighty-nine NJ Super, three seventy-seven, three six, three eight-six, three eight-eight, appellate division twenty oh seven, holding that a D five variances is more akin to a D three variance than a D one variance, and as such, the standard enunciated in Coventry Square versus Westwood Board of Adjustment, one thirty-eight NJ eight two eighty-five, nineteen ninety-four, pertaining to D three conditional use variances applies to D four FAR variances. This is so because the use in a D five variance context is permitted so that the density conditions from which the deviation is sought. As such, a D five density variance applicant need not show that the property is particularly suited for more intensive development. The board may not exercise its power to grant a D five variance otherwise warranted, however, unless a so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. Pursuant to the last unlettered paragraph of NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy, no variance or other relief may be granted without a showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The phrase zone plan is used in NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy means master plan, the DC versus DPR Co., one oh seven NJ one, four, twenty-one, nineteen eighty-seven. Under the Coventry Square rationale, the board's focus for putting the negative criteria in the D five density variance case should be identical to a D three conditional use variance case, namely, determining whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that deviations from the density requirements do not cause substantial detriment to the public good and substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The Coventry Square Court held that the strict requirement applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the first prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, Coventry Square, one thirty-eight NJ at two ninety-nine. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use variance case must be on whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that the deviations from the conditional use requirements do not cause substantial detriment to the public good, TSI East Brunswick versus East Brunswick Board of Adjustment, two fifteen NJ twenty-six, forty-three to forty-six, twenty thirteen. The court held that the strict requirements applicable to D one use variances do not apply to the second prong of the negative criteria of a D three variance, whether granting a variance would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Instead, the board's focus in a D three conditional use variance case must be on whether conditions can be imposed in its approval to ensure that the deviation from the conditional use requirement do not cause substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance, as in whether the proposal was reconcilable with the zone. As the Grubbs Court held, a D five variance applicant must demonstrate that the increase in density would not have a more detrimental effect on the neighborhood in construction of a project in a manner consistent with the zone's density restrictions. The applicant is requesting a height variance. A D six variance is required for a variance to the height condition. The board has the power to grant D six variances to forbid the height of the principal structure exceed by ten feet or ten percent, which is our case, ten percent the maximum height permitted in the zone district for the principal structure, pursuant to NJ SA forty fifty-five D seventy, D. In the particular case and for special reasons, this is so-called positive criteria of a D six variance. There are two standards that apply to the determination of whether the positive criteria of a D six variance is satisfied. The first standard is traditional D one use variance standard, enunciated in the DC versus DPR Co., one oh seven NJ one, nineteen eighty-seven. And that standard would apply if the use of the principal structure were prohibited in the zone. Simply stated, if the use of the principal structure at issue was prohibited in the zone, yet we have approved for some benefit to general welfare that result from the proposed height of the principal structure, and that the site is particularly suited to the location and height of the structure. Under these circumstances, the board believes that our courts would treat the situation similarly. similar to how non-permitted cell towers are treated, and report to the board to A, consider whether the placement of the structure at the proposed non-permitted height at the subject location is necessary in order that the structure achieves the permitted purpose, and B, consider whether the same result could be achieved by erecting the structure in a location where the height of the structure could be lessened, or by erecting the permitted structure at a lower height at the proposed location. Smart S M R versus Fairlawn Board of Adjustment, 152 NJ 309, 1998. Our courts have held that site suitability is to be determined both from the point of view of the applicant and the municipality. North East Towers Inc. versus Zoning Board of Adjustment, 327 NJ SUPER 476, 197 to 198, Appell Division 2000. The second standard is the D three conditional use standard, enunciated in Cover Street Square versus Westwood Board of Adjustment, 138 NJ 285, 1994. And that standard would apply if the use of the principal structure were permitted in the zone. See Grasso versus Spring Lake Heights, 375 NJ SUPER 41, Appell Division 2004. Simply stated, if the use and principal structure at issue are permitted in the zone, and the only deviation is its height, the board's focus would be on whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the permitted principal structure without a height higher than permitted by ordinance. Regardless of the standard employed to determine the positive criteria of the D six height variance, the board may not exercise its power to grant a D six height variance, otherwise warranted, however, unless the so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. Pursuant to the last unlettered paragraph of NJ SA 4055D 70, no variance or other relief may be granted without a showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The phrase "zone plan" is used in NJ SA 4055D 70 means master plan, the DC versus BPR Co., 107 NJ 1, 421, 1987. As with the positive criteria of the D six variance, there are two standards that apply to determination of the negative criteria of the D six variance, again, depending upon whether or not the use and principal structure at issue is permitted or not. If the variance were for a height of a non-permitted principal structure, the standard enunciated in the DC would apply. Under that standard, the applicant must prove, and the board must find by enhanced quality of proof, that there will be no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and zone plan, the DC at 2122. Under that standard, the applicant would have to reconcile the height proposed with the ordinance's prohibition of that height in the zone at issue. As the DC Court held, reconciliation becomes increasingly difficult when the governing body has been made aware of prior applications for the same variance, but has declined to revise the zoning ordinance. Where the variance is for the height of a permitted principal structure, the DC rationale pertaining to negative criteria would not apply. Thus, there will be no requirement for enhanced quality of proof and to reconcile the variance with the ordinance's prohibition of proposed height. In the permitted principal structure situation, the D three conditional use variance test enunciated in Cover Street Square applies. Under sovereignty, the board's focus must be on whether the board can impose conditions in its approval to ensure that the deviations do not cause substantial detriment to the public good and substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The board must determine whether and if so, what conditions can be imposed to mitigate the negative effects of the proposed deviation. In this case, it involves height and exit of 10 feet or 10 percent of the maximum permitted use in the zone. The application also requires a variance for building coverage, C two variance, or a benefit versus detriment variance. Board has the power to grant C two, or so-called benefit versus burdens variance from zoning ordinance regulations pursuant to NJ SA 4055D 70C two, where in an application or appeal relating to a specific piece of property, the purposes of the MLUL would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation from the zoning ordinance performance would substantially outweigh any detriment. Note that the determination of whether a lot is a specific piece of property within the meaning of the statute calls consideration of the conditions of a lot as distinguished from other properties in the zone. If all properties in the area are subject to the same conditions at the lot at issue, the appropriate remedy is revision of the ordinance and not of variance. Aaron versus Morris, 14th NJ 529, 535 to 536, 1954. Note further that the zoning benefits resulting from permitting the deviation must be for the community, improved zoning and planning that will benefit the community, and not merely for the private purposes of the owner. Kaufman versus Warren Township Planning Board, 110 NJ 551, 563, 1988. The zoning benefits resulting from permitting the deviation are not restricted to those directly obtained from permitting the deviations at issue. The benefits of permitting the deviation can be considered in light of benefits resulting from the entire development proposed. Poland versus South Plainfield Planning Board, 291 NJ SUPER 19, Appell Division 1996. Finally, note that while C one, or so-called hardship variances, are not available for self-creation and for mistakes, our courts have not held that an intentionally created situation or a mistake to bar C two variance, because the focus of the C two variance is not on hardship, or rather on advancing the purposes of zoning. Catcher Redford versus Mountain Lakes Board of Adjustment, 256 NJ SUPER 647, 656 to 657, Appell Division 1992. Also, Green Meadow versus Montaville Planning Board, 329 NJ SUPER 1222, Appell Division 2000. Board may exercise, the board may not exercise its power to grant a C two variance, otherwise warranted, however, unless the so-called negative criteria has been satisfied. Pursuant to the last unlettered paragraph of NJ SA 4055D 70, no variance or other relief may be granted without a showing that such variance or other that can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The phrase "zone plan" is used in NJ SA 4055D 70 means the master plan, the DC versus BPR Co., 107 NJ 1, 421, 1987. The application-
Before you get into now comparing the application to the standards that you just articulated, I just want to summarize for the board, because I know you had a mouthful there. But what, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're indicating is that because the property has a conditional use, which includes a multifamily element, that rather than a D one standard, a D three standard should apply to the D variances that are proposed by the applicant?
Yes, the D three variance, basically from the text of the prior cases, subsumes the D four, D five, D six.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As the boroughs planner, I would disagree with that, because the MF 75 zone permits townhomes, and these are not townhomes, these are condominium units in an apartment-style building. So I would respectfully request that Mr. Cabalgo provide testimony for D one variances.
Thank you. Mr. Monkski.
Well, I think he can give his opinion and provide whatever testimony he did and wants, it's our case. He's going to provide the same testimony, but I believe that the standard that seems articulate is correct legally.
Mr. Kennedy, how do we-
Yeah, well, we know what our planner said, and we're going to ultimately have the determination as to what standards apply. I think our borough planner was giving you a heads-up of what she thinks, so you can give your testimony, and then we will kind of hear from the applicant's, I'm sorry, the objectors planner, and then we're going to hear, I'm sure we're going to hear again from Ms. Bell, but I think she was just giving a heads-up of where she's thinking.
Understood.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
So with regard to Christine's comment, I believe that the residential multifamily as proposed, call it what you want, we can call these townhouses, we can call these condominiums. The fact that we have a former ownership doesn't change the fact that it's a residential multifamily dwelling. Typically, a townhouse is an up-and-down unit. We have side-to-side units, so we have horizontal townhouses, if you want to call them that. The separation of floors is the separation of boundary of the ownership of the property. So lot lines are running with the horizontal plane and the vertical plane. So from a use perspective, a multifamily residential dwelling, call it a townhouse or condominium, is one and the same. The fact that the walls go up and down are left to right is the only difference that I think she's trying to get to point. The typical townhouse that you can see, but notice that in the ordinance, the townhouse is in quotes, which kind of gives a little bit of looseness to its definition. The townhouse style that's written in the ordinance, quote, "townhouse style," doesn't say it is a vertical townhouse on individual lots or anything to that nature. So I disagree with Christine on the definition of what the ordinance intent was. And I believe that our application is in agreement with the townhouse style of what is permitted in the zone.
Because it's multifamily.
Because it's multifamily.
It's okay.
Okay, so, so what I did was I prepared a chart which is on the easel. A thirty is the exhibit number.
And that was previously submitted, right?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
There has been a revision to A thirty, under the impervious coverage, which I-
Should we just page this mark as in as a new one, A thirty six?
Is that the same, A thirty?
Eight thirty is originally thirty.
Okay. Oh, did you change that one?
No.
Oh, okay, got it. So there's going to be a change to A, what was A thirty, got it. What's that change?
Is this a new exhibit?
No, I don't think-
No, I just got a mark on it.
Okay.
There's a line on eight thirty which says, "impervious coverage proposed," as I just applied to earlier under eight thirty, or eight?
The last-
Eight thirty five.
Eight thirty five.
Eight thirty five was testified to as the new calculation of impervious coverage is seventy-four percent.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the board has to recognize, and so does the applicant. Building coverage is part of impervious coverage. And because they're taking a patio deck, which is to their credit, and turning it into an area that we can recycle with rainwater, it's still impervious coverage. So that seventy-four percent is not right.
Thank you, I actually did have the same question. Do you agree or disagree in your argument and testimony?
I tend to disagree, only because the green roofs that are mandated by the NJ DDP in several applications is an actual impervious, it's a impervious area to reduce runoff, so-
It is an impervious area, but is not part of the impervious calculation. It's part of the building coverage. So it can't be anything else. So I would disagree.
I respectfully disagree.
Where does the water go?
Into the underground infiltration system.
Any different than if it were to hit a roof and hit a roof leader into an underground infiltration system?
No different than the grass or the other impervious areas of the site.
Until it gets clogged up with rain, leaks, leak, whatever, and doesn't operate properly.
I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, no doubt, exception, and probably reworded.
And just for the record, so we didn't, David, we didn't mark up A thirty, did we?
No.
Okay, good.
So just for a calculation purpose, if we exclude the roof, the number is seventy-six percent. If we exclude the green roof.
You're talking about the number four.
The impervious coverage is not seventy-four, but seventy-six percent if we exclude the roof.
And I would agree if that's a better number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So under the zoning criteria for the MF 75, the last-
Mr. DeFoe, I'm sorry, just to resume this issue in the ground, are you proposing impervious coverage of seventy-six percent, seventy-four percent, or eighty point one percent?
Eighty-one was the prior plan.
Eighty point ten is what-
Correct, eighty point ten. We're down to a discussion of whether seventy-four or seventy-six percent is the correct number.
I'm just asking you which is the correct number.
According to Mr. Fried, it's seventy-six. According to me, it's seventy-four.
Okay.
The calculation shows seventy-six if we do not include the roof.
Okay.
Just the site at the grade level, not the roof.
Now, I believe the board should get a commitment from the applicant at seventy-six percent.
I agree. We'll come back, okay. Thank you. I'll mark that.
And if that's the case, then the variance on the impervious coverage would be required as a standard seventy-five. We're getting back to the zone, A thirty, the exhibit A thirty. MF 75 requires fourteen thousand square feet of area, and our proposal has twenty-one thousand square feet. The lot width of the MF 75 is one hundred, and we provide one hundred and fifty feet. The building coverage is required as fifty percent, and we're providing seventy-one point one percent, requesting a variance on building coverage. Impervious coverage is required at seventy-five percent, and without the roof, we're at seventy-six percent, requiring a variance. The floor area ratio, if the applicant complies with the density, has no restriction on FAR. We're proposing one hundred and seventy-three percent, one point seven three, requiring a variance. Front setback in the MF 75 is twenty feet, and we are proposing twenty feet. There's also a provision in the MF 75 that the front yard setback be six feet when the building is fronting on an internal access driveway. The rear yard setback for a building in the MF 75 is ten feet. We're proposing eighteen feet. Side setback on one side in the MF 75 is five feet. We're proposing five feet. Total side yard setback is ten feet in the MF 75, and we're proposing ten feet. The height and stories allowed in MF 75 is thirty-five feet and three stories. We're proposing forty-two point five feet with three stories over a parking level, requiring a height variance. The front setback covered porch requirement is twelve feet, and we're proposing twelve feet. The number of units in the MF 75 that would be allowed on the site without variance would be fourteen units. We're proposing twenty-four units, requiring a density variance. There's no standard other than RSIS for parking, and we, as Shiper's mentioned, we are in compliance with the parking requirement on the site. The MF 75 townhouse zone does not restrict bedrooms, bedroom count, and that's fourteen units which are allowed by the zone. If three-bedroom town were constructed at fourteen units, it would total forty-two bedrooms. It would also allow four-bedroom townhomes. Fourteen units would equal fifty-six bedrooms. There's no limitation on FAR or bedroom count on townhouses if density is complied with. The MF use would allow fourteen townhomes with an interior access lane to be constructed hazard-right on the two parcels. The current site plan consists of forty-eight bedrooms. The MF zone would also allow, hazard-right, the north rear townhouse to be thirty-five feet tall, three full stories, with no restrictions upon roof amenities, and to be ten feet from the rear of the property line. Two five-foot side setbacks are required. A three-story structure over a hundred feet long with no restrictions on rear guard balconies or decks could be erected ten feet from the rear property line. In addition, since the MF 75 criteria permits a building coverage of fifty percent of the lot area, the MF 75 would allow a ten-thousand, five-by-the-square-foot building, a full three stories, to be constructed with a FAR of one hundred and fifty percent. That's just the math. Area times height equals a far of one fifty. We're proposing one seventy-three. Earlier I heard that you approved or allowable far was like two or a point, I forget what Mr. Dvorsky said, but it was a very low number. Considering the allowable side and rear setbacks with the multi- Considering the allowable side and rear setbacks with the multifamily at seventy-five zone, a structure very similar to this proposal in dimension and perceived mass would be permitted as a matter of right. Objectives have criticized the proposed rear yard setback and concern for rear yard balconies. Be aware, the MF conditional use only limits same to a ten-foot rear yard setback. The project before the board maintains almost twice the rear yard setback with limited rear yard balcony decks. This was contemplated by the applicant via the acquisition of the East Early Lot, and thereby increased the prior yard setback from five-foot setback to eighteen-foot, a substantial increase from that allowed by the MF seventy-five zone. It's proposed by the applicant to raise all structures on each lot and replace same with a new twenty-four-unit multifamily condominium building which contains forty-seven EV parking spaces, a lobby mechanical room on the first floor, three stories of residential units will be on floors two through four. The rooftop consists of amenity deck, elevator room, restrooms, and two stairwells. Solar panels and air conditioner condensers will also be on the roof. The current site plan and architecture before the board dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, the current provisions made in the original and revised plans dated May of twenty eighteen and July of twenty eighteen respectively. Since our prior board meetings, the applicant acquired the one hundred, eight and one oh eight and a half and twelfth Avenue property consisting of an additional fifty by one forty feet to now propose redevelopment of one hundred and fifty-foot frontage by one hundred and forty feet deep. The acquisition was significantly increased lot size by fifty percent while not increasing the unit count. It will allow the extinguishment of an access easement between one oh eight and one twelfth Cop Avenue, which is a dangerous two-way condition and only ten feet wide. The acquisition now allows compliant parking where virtually none exists now. The current proposal reduces the previously proposed FAR from two twenty-eight to one seventy-three. Increase the prior proposed twenty-four parking stalls to forty-seven. Increase the front yard setback to a compliant twenty feet where eighteen point one feet currently exists. It increases the existing rear yard setback of one oh eight twelfth from two point eight to eighteen feet. It increases the rear yard setback, as previously noted, at five feet to eighteen feet. It reduces existing impervious coverage from eighty-three point seven percent to seventy-four percent or seventy-six percent if you don't include the roof. It increases the non-conforming Westley side yard setback from two point seven feet to a compliant five foot to the stairwell and ten foot to the building base. Reports referenced in this report are the master plan adopted December eighteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, the master plan reexamination report, not adopted in two thousand, the master plan reexamination report and update adopted August twenty-one, twenty oh six, the master plan reexamination report and update dated August twenty sixteen, New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan adopted March twenty oh one, and draft NJ State Development and Redevelopment Plan twenty twelve, not adopted. Twenty twenty-one publication NJ DCA, Department of Community Affairs, electric vehicle legislation and required municipal ordinance. There are problems associated with the existing building in use at one twelfth twelfth Avenue to Delmore Inn. In particular, the property in question currently contains a near-ified-in three-and-a-half-story rooming house. So the property is a hotel rooming house in non-conforming use. From national publications, rooming houses traditionally have been the home to disadvantaged persons who are an economic alternative to share rooms as a living unit, often two or more persons, including children. Rooming houses have long been stigmatized, drawing the low socioeconomic bills barely scraping by. Offered rooming houses have become one of the lowest forms of subsidized housing. In the nineteen sixties, the institutionalization of individuals became popular, and rooming houses became a repository for the drug-dependent and mentally inferior. As lower profits and decreased levels of maintenance become a breakbiller in the rooming house industry, rooming houses become a house of choice of the outcast, the grifters, unemployable, thieves, prostitutes, stroking those and the like. The demographic of rooming house tenants, by their own very nature, often causes increased risk to the structure they occupy. Animal activity, aggressive and assaultive behavior to tenants and the neighborhood, and quality of life issues to surrounding property owners. Risk of fire loss is increased as occupants often attempt to overload outlets with multiple appliances and electric cords. They often bring prohibited cooking devices into their rooms. During winter months, if deferred maintenance or lack of heat exists, they will utilize space heaters, gas or liquid fuel heaters, and have been known to deny fires in sinks, bathrooms, and toilets. Rooming houses have been discovered since the nineteen eighties. They have been defunded on the federal level in many programs. On the local level, many cities and municipalities have struggled with their existence. As popular profitable hotels age, they fall into disrepair and transform into rooming houses. Temporary planners have recognized the decadent effect rooming houses may have on a neighborhood, town, or community, and have encouraged their strict limitation, regulation, and removal where ever possible. While the negative impacts of rooming houses are well-known, they remain viable and profitable real estate enterprises, making their replacement difficult. Based upon market view of the applicant's Oprah reports from the borough, there have been a number of inspections and citations issued at the establishment within the past years. Reported incidents include fire safety violations, health code violations, first aid and police calls, and the other violations are attributed both to the occupants of the building. The rooming house use attracts more transient occupants and occupants with little to no income, persons who are recipients of social welfare programs and who have been released from state and local facilities. A lack of sanitation and a lack of shared investment can condition results in degradation of the property, nuisances to other occupants and neighbors, and a general blight upon the community. Listing of reported incidents from the Oprah West, in twenty fifteen, there were forty-four incidents, in twenty sixteen, fifty-two incidents, in twenty seventeen, forty-six incidents, in twenty eighteen, six incidents. During much of twenty eighteen, the Delmore Inn was closed to correct code violations. In twenty nineteen, forty-three incidents, in twenty twenty, fifty-three incidents, and twenty twenty-one, from January to March, there were twenty-one incidents. Over the past five years, went open two hundred and sixty-five reported incidents at the subject rooming house. These reported incidents all require expenditure of borrowed resources, personnel, and equipment to respond to and address this specific incident. The continuation of rooming house use at the site will only accelerate the degradation, blight, and nuisance at the site. If we develop another site with more proper use, more performance with the master plan while still providing the benefits associated with a more dense and affordable residential opportunity is needed to rectify this existing detriment to the borough. The property to the east, which is at one oh eight to one oh eight and a half twelfth Avenue. Since the last series of hearings before the board back in twenty eighteen, the principals of the applicant's acquired title to this property in the fall of twenty twenty. The property is a multistructure, multifamily, non-conforming use. Front house contains two dwelling units with eight bedrooms, and the rear structure contains three bedrooms. Parking in between the structures accommodates six vehicles. The property shares a single ingress, egress driveway with the Delmore Inn. It is too narrow for proper two-way vehicular traffic, ten feet wide, and creates a vehicular conflict. The property has been cited for quality of life violations and is listed as an animal house. A drug raid in twenty nineteen resulted in an arrest for the alleged distribution of controlled dangerous substances. The structures also suffer from deferred maintenance and show any redevelopment of adjacent properties. The surrounding properties of the Delmore Inn. Surrounding adjacent areas of twelfth Avenue and block one-ten and block one-twenty consist of mainly multifamily structures and seasonal rentals with a few single-family structures. The subject site is located in the R seventy-five single-family and MF seventy-five conditional zone. However, the existing language patterns of the site and the immediate area do not match the single-family home zone designation. Multifamily housing is the norm, not the exception, within this portion of the R seventy-five zone and immediate area. The existing lot fourteen, further to the east, fifty by one forty, contains two multifamily seasonal rental buildings and nine bedrooms. The existing lot eleven, fifty by one hundred to the west, contains a multifamily seasonal rental as well with six bedrooms. Lot nine to the north, fifty by one hundred, contains a multifamily four-bedroom unit. Directly across the street along Cop Avenue to the south is block one-twenty, and its own designation is our fifty single-family residential zone. Properties across the street from the site question contain primarily multifamily buildings, including your rooming house, the Berkeley Inn, on lot six, fifteen rooms, and a multifamily rental on lot seven containing six bedrooms, and a multifamily rental on lot eight containing seven bedrooms, and a multifamily rental on lot nine containing six bedrooms. The building heights of the area vary with most structures being two and a half to three stories in height and ranging in height to forty-one feet. The borough officials have recognized this higher density growth pattern and have designated multifamily townhome style use as a permitted conditional use in the R seventy-five zone of the area between Ocean Avenue and H Street, running on tenth through twelfth avenues. A fourteen was entered into evidence, marked up, prepared by myself and Mr. Shipers, indicates in red, multifamily areas of the neighborhood. Delmore Inn is located at lot twelve, multifamily in red, surrounding the Delmore Inn. So the R seventy-five single-family use does not exist in the immediate area of the Delmore Inn. As a rule, it is multifamily. There are a few single-family homes, but the norm is multifamily. Population and housing. The twenty sixteen reexam plan identifies within section four, the extent of significant changes in assumptions, policies, and objectives. While the borough population fluctuates, it is actually decreasing. North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority forecasted a population increase in twenty fifteen which has not been met. More specifically, the reexam identifies that the population of Delmore has been aging drastically, going from a median age of thirty-eight point four in twenty-ten to a median age of forty-four point two in twenty-fourteen. The housing portion of the twenty sixteen reexam identifies a substantial decrease in multifamily and local home units between twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen. See the twenty sixteen reexam table six, page thirty-three. Specifically, the housing protection with twenty-plus units per structure decreased by ninety-one units, from five-seventeen units to four-twenty-six units, which now represents about eleven percent of the housing stock. The ninety-one unit decrease is substantial, seventeen point six percent decrease over the four-year period, which accounted for much of the Superstorm Sandy reconstruction period. Residential units with twenty-plus units per structure providing mixed housing opportunities which can be more affordable in a single-family detached type, which is more predominant throughout the borough. To that end, more than sixty-four percent of the land in the borough is occupied by single-family uses, while less than three percent is set aside for multifamily apartments or condo use. The age of housing identified in the twenty sixteen reexam is remarkable, with approximately eighty-three point six percent of the housing stock being built prior to nineteen seventy-nine and thirty-five point seven percent being built prior to nineteen thirty-nine. A review of historical aerials identifies that the rooming house structure on the property predates nineteen forty. The borough has already delineated large areas of the borough as areas in need of redevelopment, including the Seaport redevelopment area and the Main Street area. The aging housing stock, and in this case, the age of this structure, speaks to the blight and nuisance observed at the property. The structure has likely reached its useful design life, whereby rehabilitation of the existing structure is not feasible. Conversion of multifamily units to single-family structure sustains the data described earlier that there is an erosion of smaller housing types which provides a mix of housing opportunities in the borough. Parabrep also identifies that high-end apartments within the Main Street and central Delmore areas tend to attract more affluent residents and that a decline in seasonal housing units is more prevalent. Both of these trends lead towards more private ownership and residency, less decay of the housing stock, improved streetscapes, and better visual environments. The data contained in the twenty sixteen reexam includes and recognizes trends in population, housing, and income. And my analysis concurs with the following. The population of the borough is decreasing. The population of the borough is aging drastically. There has been a decrease in the number of multifamily units. The age of the housing stock is remarkable, with eighty-three percent of all housing forty years old and thirty-five percent over eighty years old. There is an inequity of single-family to apartment or condominium land masses in the borough. It is inferred by the analysis that any negative damage trends should be addressed, corrected, or reversed, and become the project's main objective and goal in the redevelopment of the property. Setting the goals of the project in this direction will allow the applicant to construct an asset for the borough and remove a liability in order to serve a greater good. The project provides an additional housing mix for blocks as contemplated by the borough via the multifamily conditional use designation. Building height and parking. Twenty sixteen reexam is rather silent on building height throughout the borough with the exception of discussion of priorities since Hurricane Sandy, twenty sixteen, page seventeen, page seven. The discussion identifies, along with updated BFEs, base flood elevations, post-sandy reconstruction has engulfed and most buildings being elevated on pilings at varying heights, citing new design challenges that need to be addressed in the borough zoning code and design standards. Delmore participates in a national flood insurance program, community rating system, and enforces codes and ordinances regarding the same. To start, Delmore has adopted the twenty thirteen APFP maps and has adopted modifications of their residential home height ordinance to encourage home elevations. All building regulations pertaining to wind, flood, and hurricane are enforced by the building department. The property in question is not located within a flood hazard area at this time, but may be affected by sea level rise and storm surge and remapping of the flood hazard area in the map to this in the future. The discussion above and trend throughout the borough, counting an entirety of the New Jersey shore, is and will have to consist of taller buildings and parking beneath structures. The realities of providing parking in shore areas which are already substantially developed while elevating living areas to provide safety from flood combine to make parking beneath the living area of structures customary, safe, and desirable. Master plan contemplates this necessity and identifies that ordinance have been altered in an effort to encourage development that is free from the dangers of flood and accordingly allow for ground parking below living areas. See twenty sixteen reexam, page fifty, five point five, one. The added benefits of this include the maximization of efficiencies of space, increase of parking opportunities where none currently exist, and compliance with the needs of the disabled through design that permit elevator access to ground floor. The only obviousest advantage of this trend is the increased height of structures and perceived impacts to air, light, and open space. The current project is also innovative regarding electric vehicle parking and encouragement of same. It designs a model for future development. Forty-seven EV make-ready parking spots were designed, consistent with recent sweeping legislative changes for multifamily developments with more than five dwelling units. This project will construct forty-seven make-ready stalls. Under the twenty twenty-one legislation, all such projects must have fifteen percent make-ready electric spots. This development provides one hundred percent make-ready stalls. The project is in line with the recent legislation to encourage new infrastructure and a conversion to EV power vehicles. The Ford Motor Company announced in late twenty, in September twenty twenty-one, that it intends to build four new factories in a big electric vehicle push, including three battery factories and a truck plant, and eleven point four billion dollar investment towards EV vehicles. The goal is to produce one million electric vehicles per year by the latter portion of this decade. Tesla will sell eight hundred thousand electric cars in twenty twenty-one, as the New York Times reported. Ford predicts forty percent of all vehicle sales Ford predicts forty percent of all vehicle sales will be electric by twenty thirty. President Biden and Governor Murphy are also leading the legislative change towards clean energy. President Biden supports legislation that would make electric vehicles account for fifty percent of new sales as early as twenty thirty as well. This project strong is in step with national, state, and local initiatives to reduce greenhouse gases and other carbon footprints. This parking dynamic proposed encourages the public and general welfare of Delmore, state of New Jersey, and the nation. Under the twenty twenty one New Jersey E V legislation, the current proposal of forty seven E V make ready spaces, combined with the legislative tax base credit, amounts to fifty two spaces. Two of the offices are handicap accessible. As such, the current proposal no longer needs a parking variance waiver and compliant parking to be satisfied on site. Property layout. Properties combined are an oversized rectangular lot, one fifty feet by one forty feet, in the R seventy five zone. These squareable aerials identify the structures on this property dating back before nineteen forty. There is no onsite parking provided within the Delmore Inn. The age of the structure is a major contributing factor to the documented and reported ongoing building code, health, safety, and fire violation at the site. Proposed development and master plan advances. The applicant proposes to remove the existing forty unit, eighty plus occupancy rooming house, and a three dwelling structure, eleven bedroom, and construct a twenty four unit multifamily structure comprised of two bedroom units. The average owner occupied household size in twenty fourteen was shown to be two point oh five, table eight of the twenty sixteen reexam, which equates to a projected occupancy rate of forty nine persons for the new construction. The proposed structure would consist of a parking level on a ground floor for forty seven vehicles, two of which are ADA accessible spaces, with three stories of residential units above, a roof and a deck serviced by an elevator. This allows the roof to be handicap accessible. The architecture will be designed so that the building would appear to be the classic upscale structure with varying roof lines and both horizontal and vertical variations in the building lines. It should be noted that currently, there exists forty available bedrooms and eighty plus occupancy rate in a rooming house and no onsite parking. The proposed structure will require relief from the building height requirement as four stories and forty two and a half feet proposed, whereby three stories and thirty five feet of the maximum permitted as a multifamily conditional use. The existing building is forty one feet tall. The proposed project will provide an increase of twenty three units in available units, and multifamily twenty or more units in the structure carried for, table six of the twenty sixteen reexam, providing more availability in the multifamily market, while also providing year round housing opportunities which the current rooming house, which is intended to be temporary residency, does not provide. The new construction with modern materials in a more visually appealing structure will benefit the surrounding area population and housing stock. As noted above, the housing portion of the twenty sixteen reexam demonstrates that a reduction in multifamily housing has occurred, while identifying a trend of providing high end apartments and condominiums which may attract more affluent residents. Particular and unique circumstances exist at this site as no off street parking currently exists to service the rooming house. A nonconforming easement exists for use of one oh eight and one oh one and a half twelve avenue ingress and egress, as well as a driveway to the rear of the Delmore Inn. Under current standards, the rooming house would require between one and one point eight parking stalls per unit, therefore requiring forty to seventy two stalls where none currently exist. The proposed twenty four units would require forty eight parking spaces. This compliant parking would promote the purposes of zoning by increasing available parking onsite, increasing offsite availability by servicing vehicles which previously parked offsite, and would provide a safe and efficient area for residents to park. The removal of the nonconforming rooming house and three adjacent animal house dwellings, and replacement with year round residence and a multifamily housing will also have a positive impact upon the tax base, as newly constructed development should provide an exponential increase in the anticipated tax revenue from the property. Permanent residency coupled with private ownership, occupation, and low maintenance ownership will substantially reduce the impact upon the borough's resources, including the fire bureau, first aid, and police departments, and health department, and have substantial benefit upon the neighborhood and borough by reducing nuisances which currently exist at the sites. Substantial improvement of light structures also has a positive interaction effect upon the surrounding neighborhoods. Collapsing the buildings, housing, substantial nuisances can have a malignant effect upon neighborhoods, suppressing investment and eventually upkeep and maintenance. The investment in the property will likely increase property values of the surrounding neighborhood, which can then cause more investment and ultimately an improvement in the entire area. This increase in property values will strengthen the real estate market for all residents. A strong real estate market with high levels of adversity also strengthens local businesses. The proposed structure will be fully compliant with the American Disability Act, providing elevator access to all floors from the parking level. This promotes the master plan goal of modifying its development regulations to ensure compliance with ADA regulations. Rooming houses are often the depositor of homeless, single parent, family units. These families often enroll children subsequent to the commencement of school year and often remove them prior to completion of the year. This has a burning effect upon the local school system, accommodating this particular situation. Studies demonstrate that upscale condominiums targeting younger professionals and downsizing seniors enroll very few children annually in a local school system. Relationship to other plans. In the process of analyzing the twenty sixteen reexam referenced to the twenty, the two thousand master plan goals were made, which includes to generate alternative land strategies to return underutilized or follow industrial and commercial plans to a tax productive role within the borough, while promoting compatibility with surrounding land uses. The removal of the nonconforming commercial use from the property and replacement with a year round residential multifamily and housing will allow the site to return to a more tax productive role, as the newly constructed development should provide an exponential increase in the anticipated tax revenue from the property. Several references are made to the Seaport redevelopment plan, which was updated on September twenty second, twenty sixteen. The subject property is not located within the boundaries of the Seaport redevelopment area, which consists of primarily commercial properties in the west of the area of the borough along the railroad. However, plans revealing as to what the municipality envisions as appropriate for the future development of the borough of Delmore, and structural as to what enhancements are appropriate, and what constraints the municipality feels are necessary when redeveloping blighted properties. It is for this reason that we have consulted the redevelopment plan in relation to this project. Seaport redevelopment plan proposed mixed use facilities within commercial use of on for a school. Much of the planned discussion is focused upon the commercial aspects of the planned area which is not pertinent to this discussion. However, the inclusion of upper story residential is central to the redevelopment of blighted properties. The plan states in the tradition of a true Seaport village, the plan provides with use of upper floors of buildings for residential purposes. It specifies that buildings ought to be three and a half stories with the upper two and a half stories utilized for residential units. This envisions a taller Delmore with building heights that increase to allow first or commercial uses or parking as noted below. Specifically, within the building requirements section of the redevelopment plan, the Seaport plan permits buildings of three and a half stories and forty five feet maximum height, with a including interior parking. In addition, the plan identifies that first, that the floor area ratio shall not apply where redevelopment provides enclosed parking onsite, or at least overseer parking spaces for residential units. This requirement further numerate the building height, identifying the maximum height of the eave of a three and a half story building should not exceed thirty nine feet, six inches, and the average height of the roof between the eaves and the peak should not exceed forty six feet. Portions of a structure that exceed thirty nine foot six in height shall consist solely of a half story built with sloped roofs and horizontally concealed mechanical areas, and may include dormers and gables. Built therein, and such towers and architectural roof elements that are contemplated by the design guide and committed by the planning board. Maximum height of a roof ridge line shall not exceed fifty two feet above grade as pictured from the centerline of Main Street. Although the intent is not described in the plan, it can be inferred that the borough recognizes the potential impact of providing onsite interior parking reserved for residential units. The benefits of neighborhood in borough would require this substantially better planning alternative than construction upgrade with no onsite parking. Accordingly, the plan recognizes an increase in building height and waiver of floor area ratio as reasonable support to facilitate the redevelopment of the planned area. The state plan, adopt the state development and redevelopment plan locates Delmore as a planning area one, metropolitan planning area. Development of this site will serve the plan goals of redirecting the population to urban areas where infrastructure and services already exist. In the metropolitan planning area, the state plan's goals and intention include, provide for much of the state's future redevelopment growth in a compact form, upgrade and expand housing to attract a balanced residential population. Draft state plan includes planning area one in the priority growth investment area, which is in an area where more significant development and redevelopment is preferred, and where public and private investment to support such development and redevelopment will be prioritized. Proposed development would promote the general welfare by advancing the goals of the state development and redevelopment plan and draft state plan. The project criteria. The project building would develop requiring four critical interrelated ingredients: maximize off street parking, livable unit areas, minimize unit count, and minimize building height. My trip human research was done to develop the critical plan criteria. In order to remove the blighted building and its profitable business operation from the neighborhood, a sizable investment must be made. This investment in the neighborhood and in the future of Delmore would lead to increased property values in the neighborhood, and likely general upgrading and improvement for the area as well. Elevating the building to provide podium style parking was also a key component of the design process. The building height proposed allows the density required and result in unit count, and by doing so, enables the project to become economically feasible. Lowering of the building height would diminish the unit count, would diminish the unit area, and therefore render the project not feasible to pursue. Special reasons. Special reasons are rooted in the purpose of zoning as defined in municipal land use law, the M L U L. Under section A, to encourage permissible action, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and the general welfare. The promotion of the general welfare is the special reason which most embodies the grant of the use of variance. Use promotes the general welfare because the site is particularly suited for the proposed use, as quoting Price versus Hemijai and Unit City Court Adjustment, A forty six eleven, New Jersey Supreme Court. In that case, the court concluded that the particular suitability is a more flexible concept, that the meaning should not be interpreted too narrowly, and that the standard, if you meant, would give me a fact and site specific approach. The court in that case found that the property was in fact particularly suitable for the proposed use, and the board's decision was entitled to difference. In this case, the specific, this specific site personally houses the Delmore Inn and three animal house dwellings at the project location. The opportunity to remove the Delmore Inn and three animal house dwellings and replace it with a less intense use would mean, would enhance the neighborhood, bring additional revenue to the borough by way of increased taxes, and by providing year round residence supportive of the downtown businesses and transit system, as proposed by this application. Elimination of the Delmore Inn will allow the first aid, fire department, health department, and police department personnel and equipment to become more available to better serve all the residents of the borough. Elimination of the Delmore Inn will remove the nuisances associated with its inherent lifestyles. Proposed development would promote the general welfare by advancing the goals of the state development and redevelopment plan and draft state plan. The sites historically have been occupied by forty to eighty persons at the Delmore Inn on a regular basis, and twenty two person, person at one oh eight and one oh eight and a half twelve avenue, thereby negating any impact from a new development. The properties are well suited for the proposed development. The proposed site is surrounded by existing multifamily uses. The location within the first block from the ocean makes the location desirable, and well suited for its proposed occupants, who will be able to reside in close proximity to the major draw of the area, the ocean. There are a number of existing residential buildings of similar height which adhere to parcel only the project will be built based on the grant of the use variance. The building, to be demolished, is forty one feet tall. The proposed building height is forty two and a half feet tall. Therefore, the new height is not a significant change for the present condition at the site. When compared to the public standard of the R seventy five zone, the property was already nonconforming because it was developed as a forty unit room, eighty plus occupancy rooming house, and twenty two plus person multifamily. The property at twenty one thousand square feet in area is oversized through that zone and oversized in comparison to nearby parcels. The project is consistent with the borough's master plan for redevelopment projects, where setbacks are diminished, at grade covered parking is encouraged, and residential development over the parking level is now the norm. The demolition of the building at this location will remove the rooming house and three dwelling animal houses and its nonconforming use, thereby removing a bite from the neighborhood which has been a constant drain on borough resources, including fire department, first aid squad, police department, health department, and construction code department, and has been a constant source of nuisances to the neighborhood. Replacing the old building with a modern structure with proper fire protection, flood protection, air conditioning, and onsite parking will promote the general welfare. Other special reasons also supporting a grant of use variance, as they also promote the purposes of planning from the M L U L, under B, to secure safety from fire, flood, kind of other natural and manmade disasters. The proposed building is properly fire suppressed, properly elevated above flood levels to meet this intent and purpose. The existing structures are antiquated, and the three dwelling units on one oh eight and one oh eight and a half twelve are not fire protected. Under sub paragraph C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space, the elevated building proposed provides adequate air circulation, and the oversized lot tends to mitigate the minimal impact of light in open space. Under paragraph E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations, will contribute to the well being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions of the preservation of the environment. Twenty four unit project enabled the elimination of a bite upon the neighborhood by removing the Delmore Inn, its use, its nuisances, and the demand to displace upon the borough of Delmore, together with elimination of three animal house dwellings. It proposes the project, which likely will house approximately forty nine permanent residents with no seasonal rentals, versus in excess of a hundred current summer and transient residents, with little to no regard for the borough's well being. Under sub paragraph G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental department, in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Master plan identified negative trends in the housing market that will be reversed by the construction of the proposed project. Proposed condominiums, two units, will offer an alternative housing choice in Delmore and creates an affordable housing option. Under sub paragraph I, to create a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques and good civic design and arrangements. The project eliminates a seventy five to eighty year old building which has exceeded its useful life, removes two preexisting nonconform, intense uses from the site, and constructs a visually appealing building that will begin enhancement to the neighborhood. The negative criteria, the negative criteria. The variance from the grant will not result in substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons. Traffic. The use of, the use is a low traffic generator and onsite parking is proposed. The one way traffic has been agreed to, which will increase traffic safety at pathways, ingress and egress points, and allow for better user onsite maneuverability. Noise. The year round residential Noise, the year-round residential use will not be a substantial generator of noise. Reduction in air, light, and open space, the open ground-level parking area will provide for increased air circulation. Ground-level site setbacks are increased, and there is not a substantial decrease in light and open space due to proposed building size, placement, and paint. Storm runoff, the plan provides for the installation of paved walkways and driveways, the underground storage and infiltration of lawn, a green recharge landscape area that will mitigate site runoff associated with impervious areas. Solar electric panels on the roof will assist in the decreased demand on fossil fuels and electric generation. The unique existing building located on the site, seventy-five to eighty years old rooming house, will be eliminated along with its non-conforming use and blight on the neighborhood. The project will reduce the need for continual public services and resources, fire, police, health, first aid, code enforcement departments, due to new modern construction and diverse household occupants, thereby freeing up these resources to better serve the residents of Delmore. There will be a reduction in the number of units from forty-three to twenty-four, thereby decreasing the intensity of use. There will be total satisfaction for onsite parking, thereby increasing availability of on-street area parking. The project, the project is geared for dual-income young professionals, student, and senior which will result in the increase of median income level in the borough and will result in the low amount of school-aged children, thereby not burning the school system. There will be a reduction in noise, nuisance noise, thereby creating a quieter environment. The project will bring twenty-four permanent residences to the area to increase local business, decrease crime, add market value to the neighborhood, and increase borough tax revenues. The proposed building height at forty-two and a half feet is only one point five feet by code higher than the present roof peak, and is not a substantial change in existing condition. Other existing newly constructed residential buildings within close proximity to the site are at heights approaching forty feet, so the proposed height of forty-two point five feet is not substantially out parallel with the neighborhood. The project will bring new construction to the area, remove seventy-five to eighty-year-old structure, and three dwelling animal houses which have surpassed their useful life. Existing Delmore Inn has halted redevelopment and reinvestment on 12th Avenue. This project will spur redevelopment and reinvestment in aging and deferred maintained buildings on 12th and in assembly. The proposed use and structure can be accommodated by the parcel without adversely impacting the overall neighborhood development scheme. In terms of consistency with the zoning plan, master plan, and zoning ordinance, the proposed project will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance for the following reasons. The site presently contains non-conforming uses, and the goal of the master plan is to remove non-conforming uses. This project eliminates a commercial use in a residential zone and creates multifamily, individually-owned residential units. The site currently has forty-three units, and the twenty-four proposed units can be adequately and appropriately handled onsite with compliant onsite parking provided. This is not a new use for the site, as the use of the site as a multifamily site has existed for approximately eighty years. A master plan goal is to provide suitable housing for all income, age, and lifestyles. This project is a different housing type that will serve various household types. Similar buildings of this type have been successfully developed in other areas of the borough, Seaport redevelopment area, with similar setbacks, heights, and densities, which have not impaired the goals of the master plan, but rather have provided revitalization to the neighborhood with new modern construction. The proposed building is properly elevated to address any future concerns regarding flooding. The proposed project will be in full compliance with ADA regulations and include reconstruction on both sidewalks and walkways within the project limits. In conclusion, the proposal will not cause substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the zoning plan. The proposal is commensurate with developments proposed within other areas within the borough which are in need of redevelopment. This site and location are particularly suited to redevelopment with multifamily residential structure and multifamily use within the MF-75 multifamily zone. The project regains an existing non-conforming use and structure. For the planning reasons enumerated above, it is my professional opinion that the proposed redevelopment of the Delmore Inn site and one oh eight, one oh eight and a half, 12th Avenue with a twenty-four unit residential structure will be an appropriate use of the site and will be a benefit to the neighboring properties and to the borough as a whole. The end.
You heard the municipal planner indicate that she thought that perhaps a D1 variance was more appropriate than the D3 in this situation. But for this property to meet the D1 criteria, in addition to the analysis that you just gave, you would have to demonstrate that the property was particularly suited, a particular suitability for this proposed use. Can you describe for the board why this property meets that criteria also?
Well, historically, the site is a multifamily site, three eighty-plus years. The use has been there and had worked within the neighborhood. The site is adequately sized area-wise to provide all onsite parking, and it's self-contained. The use has not been changed per se. It's multifamily, whether it's a boarding house or a condominium, but the intensity has decreased. So it is actually decreasing the intensity, which I think plays to the specific question that you asked me.
So with respect to the decreased intensity, can you describe for the note detail of why you use that?
Well, if you take the animal houses, the three units there, and Delmore Inn, you'd have over, a population of over a hundred people during the summer, during the peak time of the year, whereby the, using the multiplier number from the reexamine report of two-point-oh-five persons per dwelling unit, our project will generate around forty-nine, fifty people versus the hundred that are there and have been there for the last eighty years or whatever. So it's about half of density of what's there today in the population. So it's a decrease in the use as far as how many people there on the site.
And with respect to particularly suited, has the municipality through the adoption of the MF multifamily zone also indicated the types of uses that would particularly suit it for this property?
Right, so strictly under the MF zone, it allows quote townhouse-style townhouses or multifamily structures. There's no limitation on bedrooms, however. So as far as the intensity of what is allowed by the MF-75, we did the calculation that fifty percent of the lot could be covered by a building, and if the lot area is twenty-one thousand square feet, fifty percent would be a building of an area on the ground of ten thousand five hundred square feet. And the MF-75 zone allows a three-story building, so you would have thirty, thirty-one thousand five hundred square feet of building. And if you did math, thirty-one thousand five hundred of building divided by twenty-one thousand of lot area is a far of one hundred and fifty. Our proposal is one-seventy-three, not that significantly different than what is allowed by right as far as density. Getting back to population, if there was fourteen units and had four bedrooms apiece, you would have fifty-two bedrooms. We're proposing forty-eight bedrooms. So the, as of right, the zoning would allow fifty-two bedrooms, and we're proposing forty-eight bedrooms. So I think as of right, we're allowed an intensity and a, and a density which is greater than our proposal.
So in determining whether or not this property is particularly suited for the development proposed, you've analyzed what the number of bedrooms would be under the MF multifamily zone compared to the current. You've analyzed what the setbacks would be, front, side, and rear, and have concluded that the proposed development is particularly suited for this property because it meets or is generally in the same suitability category from a planning perspective as the MF-75 zone. Is that correct?
That's correct. In some instances, we are, we have further setbacks, we have, you know, less, less population, similar square footages than what is allowed by the MF-75.
All right.
With that, we'll open it up to Mr. Borowski for some crosstalk. We'll like to note that-
Mr. Chair, yeah, if I could, due to the hour, there are a couple of residents who said that they may not be able to make it on the twenty-eighth, and they could go for me. I have no problem.
I prefer not to go out where Mr. Kennedy is at, Donald.
I mean, were you asking for them to make public comments or to ask questions?
No, only questions.
I defer to you, Mr. Chairman.
I just defer to you.
If he wanted for you, as a convenience, to make for those who can't come here.
All right. How many residents aren't going to make it to the next meeting that want to ask questions during this meeting?
I can wait. I mean, I want to reserve, I want to reserve my right to be able to-
Ask questions. Certain. Is there anyone else that needs to ask questions during this meeting that wasn't going to get to the next meeting? Assuming there's a next meeting.
Mr. Borowski might actually ask some of the questions that the public want to ask anyway, so maybe we can-
Yeah, and I'm just back to the note on the hour. I would say we'd probably look for a breaking point between ten and ten fifteen, and we're going to wrap up no later than ten-thirty. If we can get out of here by ten-fifteen, I mean, I'm not trying to shorten your timeframe, just giving you an idea of how long this meeting is going to run.
Right, right. I was assuming ten o'clock is that time. Okay, let's see. Mr. DeFolgo, where to begin? So a couple of issues. I agree with the planner that you obviously don't meet the MF-75 criteria. Is that correct?
I agree that you don't agree.
And do you agree that I don't agree?
I agree that you don't agree.
Okay. Do you, do you, I'm sorry if I'm boring you. I got to wake up after that recitation.
Mr. Borowski is completely in a focus, okay? We're trying to settle here at the end of the meeting. Please, Mr. with your questions.
So let me just ask a question. Do you, does the proposed application comply with the MF-75 criteria?
There are several conditions that the application would not comply with.
Okay, and so, which means that you require variance relief in order to allow the deviation from the required conditions of the conditional use in the MF-75. Is that right?
I think we presented both the D3 and the D1 case tonight.
So which one are you relying on?
Judging, she presupposes you can rely on both.
Okay, so you, so you're saying that the variances sought as part of the application are being sought pursuant to the provisions of the R-75 zoning criteria and are also being sought pursuant to the MF-75 zoning criteria, correct?
Correct.
So how do we decide what is the required or applicable criteria for each of the variances that I'm about to go through without knowing which criteria you're relying on?
Well, we covered both under the testimony, so we can address that if you have a question.
Yeah, no, I have a bunch of questions. All right, so then we're going to go through a two-phased analysis. We're going to go through each of the variances based on the MF-75 zone, and then we're going to go through them based on the R-75 zone. Correct?
That's what you're going to do, just do it. You're asking him if you can do that?
Okay, I was just trying to be polite. Are you, are you troubled by the fact that your notice pertains and sets forth and identifies only those criteria set forth in the R-75 zone?
No.
Okay, good. So let me, let me start off with the use, right, which is at the top of my list of the variances. I'll go into some more specifics later, but for now, I'd just like to hit a couple of the major variances which affect my property and my clients' property and the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding neighbors. And so at the top of the list, of course, is the use. So this is a single-family residentially-zoned district, correct?
And an MF-75 zone district.
Right, but you said we want, we are going to go through both, so we're going to start with the R-75 district.
But the way you worded it, you kind of like eliminated the other section.
Thank you for correcting me. So with respect to the R-75 zoning criteria, I believe the testimony that you read from the report, I, by the way, I assume you prepared the report?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I believe that your testimony in there was that with respect to a D1 variance, which would be required under the R-75 zone, you have, the proposed project satisfies both the positive and negative criteria, correct?
Yes.
Can you explain to me how you satisfy the positive criteria with regard to a proposal that consists of twenty, excuse me, twenty-four condominium units where one unit is permitted in the zone under the R-75 zoning criteria?
The site is consistent with the neighborhood development scheme of multifamily uses. The present use is a multifamily use, so the criteria will be satisfied as we can replace the forty-unit structure with the twenty-four unit structure, which is less intense, but the use is consistent with the use of the area as shown by the exhibit A-14, I believe it is.
I was asking about this site. I was saying, how does-
Yeah, this site, which is the Delmore Inn site and the animal houses next door to it. So this site is already a multifamily site and is proposed to remain a multifamily site. It's consistent with the neighborhood development scheme of multifamily in the R-75 zones.
And it's your testimony as a planner that even after you demolish the existing non-conforming uses, that you're entitled to rely on that to satisfy the positive criteria for justification of proposing twenty-four units where one is permitted?
The twenty-four units is a reduction from the existing use.
And that's the basis for your conclusion that you've met the positive criteria, correct?
It's one of the bases.
Well, give me the others.
The fact that the neighborhood is multifamily use adjacent to behind it and across the street. It's not a new use to the neighborhood.
Okay, and would the same testimony apply if you were, if the applicant were proposing, I don't know, let's say, twelve condominium units?
That's not the applicant proposing, so I can't answer that question.
You cannot answer it. Okay. When you talk about the, so we have, I think, your testimony as to the positive criteria justifying this very significant relief. Can you tell me how, I didn't finish my, I didn't finish the question.
I understand. Would you like to reread the positive criteria?
If you think that's helpful, go right ahead.
No, I'm just saying I could if you want me to.
I'm sure you can, because we just sat here and listened to you read it. So let me ask you this. You testified that this property is particularly suited for the proposed twenty-four units, correct?
Yes.
Can you explain to me, you can read if you like, but I prefer not, can you explain- Can you explain to me, you can read if you like, but I prefer not, can you explain to me how this property is particularly suited for twenty-four condominium units in a single-family residential zone?
Right, I think you might be forgetting that this property is applied on the town. The Belmarin is applied on the public service of the borough and the neighborhood. So, in a vacuum, if you're talking about, if the Belmarin wasn't there, if it was a vacant lot, people would have a tough case to sell here.
Oh, we will have a vacant lot.
No, no, we're not going to have a vacant lot. It's either going to be a Belmarin or it's going to be a twenty-three unit development. I'm not going to knock it down and leave a vacant lot there. So, the issue is the fact that the site has a particularly unsuitable building on it makes it particularly suitable for redevelopment of a multifamily.
Oh, okay, let me write that down, that's the first time I've heard that. So, you're saying that as a planner, your opinion as to the particular suitability of this site is because it's currently particularly unsuitable?
It's one of the factors.
What are the others?
The fact that it's within a multifamily area of the borough near the ocean and that it presently has a multifamily use on it and next to it.
Okay, all right, any other factors that you have incorporated to your finding that this property is particularly suited for twenty-four condominiums?
I think the major, the major factor is the fact that the Belmarin exists at the site-
Right.
And is unsuitable, and that's-
Got it, got it.
The benefit of the same use but less intense use to replace an undesirable feature of the borough.
Okay, so the current unsuitability, in your opinion, justifies or constitutes, serves as the basis for your conclusion that the subject property is particularly suited for twenty-four units?
It's one of the reasons.
Right, it's one, and then I asked you for the others and then you repeated it. But let me ask you this. Your appraiser, the appraiser testified earlier about thirty-two units in his analysis. Would your opinion be that this property is particularly suitable for thirty-two units?
That's not what we're applying for, that was his report, we're applying for twenty-four units.
Okay, and would it be particularly suitable for twelve units?
Again, same answer.
Okay, can I, can I ask you how, what is the magic of twenty-four units that in your opinion as a professional planner makes this property particularly suitable for twenty-four units?
We have room on parking on-site for twenty-four units. That was one of the driving factors to make sure that we had enough parking for the units proposed.
Okay, and so, so, just so I can get it straight, you were saying that because you complied with parking, that's the end of your analysis with respect to particular suitability? That's only, that's only one of them.
Parking is a major issue in the borough, so unless we meet parking requirements, it would be hard for us to ask for a variance for X amount of units if we don't have parking to support it. So, number one is to provide parking.
Okay, now, in terms of the negative criteria, right, and you testified about that, and of course, my clients own the home directly adjacent behind the subject property. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Behind the animal houses.
They're behind the animal houses? How many are there?
Three.
And the ones that are licensed by the state as a motel?
That's to the west of the, oh, you're at-
Why don't we, can you tell us where your-
Where I'm at, where I'm at, sure, sure.
Maybe there's some confusion.
Maybe it is, let's see. That's it, that's it.
Did you just identify that with your marker what you just pointed to?
I pointed to the easterly side of the apartment.
I'm sorry, just, what are you looking at that's A?
Oh, that's A thirty-five.
Okay, and were you pointing to the-
Is there a lot number?
Yeah.
Lot one-ten.
Lot six.
You can't dig up the floor, do you think?
Lot six.
Lot one-ten, lot six.
Which is a fifty-foot wide lot to the north of the easterly side of the project, which presently there's a dwelling within two feet of the property line at that point, an animal house.
So, Rick, where you're pointing to is your client's-
It's my client's property, my clients live right here, directly behind the property center.
Okay. So, P, I'm sorry, A twenty-seven shows it a little clearer. Mr. Brodsky's client is lot six, and this is the animal house located on one oh eight and a half twelfth Avenue.
Right, and so, with respect to the negative criteria, can you explain how my clients who live adjacent to this, to the proposed application would not be negatively impacted by the, by the development?
Well, we're increasing the setbacks from the existing condition to the proposed condition. Including the setback from two-plus feet back to eighteen feet. The allowable setback is being met. The MF seventy-five zone-
So, we're in the, we're in the R-seventy-five zone analysis-
All right.
And the required rear setback is what, forty feet, correct?
It's three feet to the garage. The garage can be built three feet from the property line.
I'm asking about your, your structure. Your structure, your proposed structure is required to be forty feet from the rear property line, correct?
It was a single-family house, Chris.
Oh, it's a what, it can be closer if it's multifamily?
No, the forty-foot setback applies to the single-family line.
And what rear setback applies to your proposed structure?
It's what our plan is proposing.
Oh, so you decided what's required?
That-
And what is that?
The plan, as it develops with the parking and the structure, the proposed setbacks are as laid out on our schedule.
Right, and you just said you complied with the forty-foot setback requirement in the R-seventy-five zone. The plan shows eighteen feet.
Forty-foot setback is required for a single-family line.
I'm asking you if a forty-foot setback is required in the R-one zone, yes or no?
The R-one zone?
R-seventy-five zone, I'm sorry.
It's required for a single-family line.
So, if you, if you have a multiple family, if you have a multifamily or commercial use, you're suggesting that the rear setback required in the zone of forty feet would be reduced?
Are you now asking about the MF seventy-five?
I'm asking, I'm trying to get an answer. I asked him if, what is the rear setback that is required in the R-one zone?
R-seventy-five.
I'm sorry, in the R-seventy-five zone, residential, single-family zone. What the required setback, when I look in the ordinance, is forty feet. Is that right?
For a single-family home, yes.
Okay, and what would it be for a townhouse development?
Based on our application for use variance, use variance, granted, let's assume the both variances that would typically require in the R-seventy-five zone. So, there is no standard that I can give you.
So, in your opinion as a planner, is it your opinion that based on your proposed multifamily development, that the otherwise required forty-foot rear setback should be less?
Should be one.
Less, L-E-S-S, less than forty feet? Is that what you're suggesting?
The setback would be as per the plan that we developed, eighteen feet.
I know what you're proposing, I'm asking you what is required. Simple question, if you don't know, you can say that.
I'm trying to explain to you that if it was a single-family house, the setback is forty feet.
And where does it say that the setback is eighteen feet if you, if you have something other than a single, we can do this all night, we'll go on all night.
I thought you weren't asking about the MF seventy-five.
I'm not, I can't get an answer. What is the required setback in the R-seventy-five zone?
Forty feet.
I'm asking him, he won't say it.
He said twelve.
You did? Forty feet?
For a single-family home.
This happened last time, all right? I don't want to be blamed for a witness who's just trying to play games and not answering my questions.
Listen, it's ten o'clock. Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we call it here and we'll start back up fresh in the next meeting, maybe start over with fresh ones. I just feel like we're not moving forward.
Just trying to get an, I, look, I apologize if it's me, I kind of think I'm not getting the answer to my question.
Yeah, I think, I think it all depends on the center. All right, so what do we need to do to wrap up this meeting? Have a note we have-
We need to adjourn this to a date ceremony. And that we have heard a handful of the hours.
That's right.
And then just, Chairman, just so you're aware, I think just one of the applications on that.
Is that, this is coming up on the twenty-eighth?
There are other applications on these.
I see three in front of this one.
Yeah.
All right. And what's meeting after that?
It'll be, oh.
If I could just ask the public to keep the noise down while I figure this out. All right, so you got December sixteenth.
When's the next meeting?
We have three applications on the weekend for October twenty-eighth in front of yours. I feel like we have a lot of testimony to go. The next open meeting we have is December sixteen, what year?
It is late, apparently the crowd is crowded, but maybe we can keep it under control so we can get through this for everyone.
So, December sixteen is our next full open meeting. Would you like to come back on one, the twenty-eighth where you are scheduled, but there's three other applications in front of you.
If you don't want to come back, if there's three applications ahead of us.
And in the November meeting, we also have three applications on there already.
Uh, is December sixteenth the next meeting?
Yes, there's orders for you on there.
No, there's none.
There's none on December sixteenth.
We'll take December sixteenth.
Take December sixteen, we'll make sure you're the first applicant on. All right, so Mr. Chairman, if I could, and ladies and gentlemen, I know we're getting tired, but this is important, so momentarily, we're going to make a motion to carry this meeting, this application to December sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, at six o'clock PM.
Yes.
And Mr. Shiper Zerlonsky, do you on behalf of your client consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has asked?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Brodsky, you're aware of coming back December sixteen?
Yes, six PM.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, with your consent, I'd like to have a motion to carry this application to December sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, without any further public notice. And ladies and gentlemen, if any of your friends couldn't come tonight or they left early, please let them know. Mr. Chairman, would that be a motion?
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Bye. All right, that motion is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.